Stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, if we could have a motion on the minutes of September fifteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the minutes of September fifteenth as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, thank you. Next, we have the minutes of September twenty ninth.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the minutes of September twenty ninth and reaffirm a vote we made by roll call vote. That be appropriate?
We did not take a roll call vote. So this is a motion to accept the minutes and then we can discuss it.
All right, I move we accept.
So, folks, when we started that meeting on the twenty ninth, because it was done remotely, we had a roll call vote of all the folks there, which was proper and expected. When it came time for the motion made by Mr. Trask and seconded by Miss Member Clark, I called for a vote erroneously, it should have been a roll call vote. So recognizing my error, I repeated the vote, which was five to nothing, so the folks at home had a clear understanding of what the vote was. So obviously, if I had called a roll call vote, the vote still would have been five oh. So I just want to make that clear. All in favor of the minutes as written?
Aye.
Opposed, none, it passes, thank you. Yes, certainly.
Is it my understanding that you're not intending to revote that motion of forwarding the opinion?
I can't change the minutes, Keith, because they've already been recorded.
Okay.
So that's correct. I just wanted to explain that it was a five oh vote.
Okay, do you intend, I guess we'll discuss it in a minute, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll do new public business, anything that's not on the agenda, please. Step over to the microphone, either one, and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Dan Gagden, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Five.
Welcome, Dan.
Thank you. I've written to the board over the weekend regarding my concerns about the reorganization of the Preservation Commission. The issue is important to very many in town, I know that the select board is very busy this evening and I'll be very brief. But one reason I wanted to speak at the start of the meeting, not just write a letter to the board, was that because of a potential drastic change to a town commission's mission, there wasn't really any public discussion, a public hearing, a public vote, and so that's just why I wanted to appear at a public meeting to bring it up. And secondly, when I initially wrote to the select board over the weekend, one member very kindly forwarded me a copy of a memo from the Town Planning Department, which I really appreciated, or I should say, the Land Use and Community Services Department. And although I had expressed a few of my concerns in my letter, really, the memo seemed to confirm most of them about a serious attempt to change not just the mission of the Preservation Commission, but also some of its membership requirements, and some of which weren't mentioned at the meeting. First, the attempt to make changes to the commission's role, I had already mentioned in a letter, I won't really go into. I just wanted to add that in nineteen sixty-four, when Town Meeting voted to establish the commission, they linked it to a state law, an Enabling Act, if you will, the Historical Commission's Act. And so, the commission can't really be redefined unless there's a vote of Town Meeting to change that, sort of a higher level, that was something I've looked into since then. And really, I think that it rests primarily on a misunderstanding of the commission's role. And to avoid misunderstandings, most other cities or towns had really copied this act into their bylaws, they made it crystal clear so that there was no confusion, everything was in one place, like all the other boards and commissions have outlines of their responsibilities, their membership. And that's what I would encourage the town to do, and also so that someone doesn't have to comb through the state law and fifty-five years of Town Meeting decisions to discover that it's tied to a state law. But one other concern from that memo that was kindly sent to me was that the membership of the commission seems to be changed beyond just having representatives of other committees and it not having its own membership. But in fact, it describes who is eligible for commission membership. And it says, Danvers citizens who are eligible to serve on the commission are those, quote, "in the architecture, legal, government administration, design, real estate, or related fields." And that leaves out those with historic experience, historic preservation experience, those in the historic field. And the commission's role is to determine the historical significance of structures, not just architectural significance. Its role is also to work with historic preservation organizations, conduct historical studies. So omitting those with historic background is a very big change. And in fact, out of the volunteers who've served on the commission in the past decade, very few would meet this new requirement as it's worded. So that shows that that is a break with past experience. So in general, I'd just like the board to consider for a future Town Meeting, potentially this spring, a warrant article revising the bylaw, making clear what's always been true of the commission, just making it simple, straightforward, so that everybody knows what its role is, what's expected of it, what it can do. And also undoing the membership change in the future at some point, where other members of other commissions are represented on it, instead of having the commission with its own unique independent membership and the eligibility requirement of not just those with architectural experience, but also those with historical experience, or to open it up even further beyond that. And I wanted to say that I, the Town Manager had reached out to me recently, so did the Director of the Planning Department, and I'm very happy to work with them for this, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention at a meeting, since it hadn't really been discussed at the previous meeting, other than just a couple sentences. So I wanted to kind of on the record there. But I appreciate the emails I got back and the email from the Town Manager about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. And I was going to bring up your email under correspondence and new business at the end of the meeting, and I will address it as well at that time. But I'm glad that you're going to sit down with Aaron Henry sometime in the near future and give him your thoughts, your concerns, and I appreciate that, and thanks for coming tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I could ask a question. Dan, Mr. Gagden, could you go over the criteria for being a member again?
Yeah, so in a memo that was sent to me, it doesn't have a date. And so the criteria for membership, membership should be, I'm quoting, "Membership should be composed of individuals in the architecture, legal, governmental administration, design, real estate, or related fields."
So I guess governmental is the only way our town archivist could be considered a member of this, in that vein. So, Mr. Chairman, when it gets to the point, I would ask that, to the point that the Town Meeting member makes and the author of the letter makes, can we find out the authority by which the change was made and just validate that as a group, they can make the change, or is it particularly with the Town Meeting to make those changes?
It's a good question, that's one that we're investigating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other new business?
Dan, also, what Keith has done, may I speak to new business?
Yes.
It's up.
It's up to you, I'd prefer you didn't, but.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, as a follow-up on what we just discussed briefly about the minutes from the last meeting, I hope you are in receipt of two emails from me, one dated.
They'll be discussed under new correspondence at the end of the meeting. But you go right ahead.
And could I ask then, are you in receipt of this afternoon's email with two rulings from the Attorney General's Office?
No.
Okay. Should want me to get into that now or later? Usually, the public isn't allowed to speak during.
This is new business, if you have something new to bring up, bring it up.
Okay, thank you. Just now, you clarified that at your meeting of September.
Twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth, thank you. You voted to forward the opinion of Town Council regarding an open meeting violation complaint from me to the Attorney General's Office as the town's response to the complaint. You acknowledged just now that you did it by voice vote instead of roll call vote, but then you followed up by announcing the vote was five zero, and that clarified what the vote was. The rulings I sent you that I received this afternoon from the Attorney General's Office addresses that exact situation. The number for your reference is Open Meeting Law twenty twenty dash eighty-two, dated July ninth, twenty twenty, related to an issue that happened in Somerset. In short form, I'll just say that on April twenty ninth, the board held a meeting which all three board members participated remotely, this is a Somerset Board. Votes taken during this meeting were not conducted by roll call vote. The board asserts that all votes were unanimous, and therefore, it was readily apparent how each member voted. This is the Attorney General's ruling on this matter. Even if a vote is unanimous, the Attorney General's Office regulations require that all votes taken during any meeting in which a member participates remotely must be by roll call vote. And then they cite nine forty C M R twenty-nine dot ten, section seven, C, which is the updated guidance regarding remote participation during the pandemic. So I appreciate what you said, you announced the vote as unanimous, and therefore, everyone knows. Unfortunately, that was your interpretation of that voice vote. And the reason why they require a roll call vote is to avoid that interpretation. I was on the call, and I couldn't hear all five voices. And so the reason why they have the requirement for a roll call vote is to make sure there is no uncertainty in how each member voted. And so I brought that to your attention before, I have rulings today, two of them, similar ruling. For your record, it's Open Meeting Law O M L twenty twenty dash eighty-nine, issue that came before the Attorney General's Office from Swansea School Committee, same situation. Remote participation meetings require roll call votes for everything. So I bring that to your attention because today is the fifteenth day from my initial Open Meeting Law complaint. And I feel as though in my email of this afternoon, when I forwarded these two, I asked that you remedy the situation, and you have that ability to do that tonight, and again, I ask you to do that.
So to your point, with that information, which I have not read, and I take your word for it, if we can remedy it tonight by taking a roll call vote, does that satisfy the ruling, Mr. Town Manager?
I believe it would, we are, as Mr. Lucy points out, tomorrow in violation of our requirement to respond to his initial complaint within fourteen days. But my understanding is if the complainant himself is satisfied allowing that to be remedied in that way, then we could certainly make that clear to the Attorney General's Office when we're required to submit the response.
And I would be willing to do that, Mr. Lucy, if you feel that would satisfy the situation?
I'm not the Attorney General's Office.
I understand, but.
If you feel as though that's a satisfactory remedy, then I suggest that you follow that course, and then we'll let the Attorney General decide if that's sufficient or not. I mean, the second violation was, and it seems trivial, but I will quote a member of the board, you know, "I also believe in the courts and the law, and I also believe that if we do not have a functional rule of law, the town will disintegrate. I think it's a bad precedent to attempting to take matters into our own hands regardless of the law." And so it may seem trivial, but the second vote was also the voting to adjourn.
The issue was we didn't take a roll call vote, and I'm ready and willing and able to remedy that, rectify that, tonight.
If you feel as though that voting tonight.
And if the Attorney General feels that that's sufficient.
That's up to the Attorney General to rule, not me.
Right, exactly.
All right.
So, anything else?
That's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Trask.
Mr. Chairman, I previously voted to accept the minutes of September twenty ninth, I'd like to ask for reconsideration.
Yes, thank you.
I'd ask a motion to reconsider the vote on accepting the minutes as presented.
Is there a second? So at this point in time, I'm going to ask Mr. Trask to repeat his motion made on the twenty ninth.
Do you want to take a vote on mine?
Oh, yes, so all in favor of his reconsideration?
Motion for reconsideration, aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as I made the original motion, I will restate that in the meeting of September twenty ninth, I move, excuse me, that to direct the Town Manager to submit the prepared response to the Attorney General's Office along with the complaint by Mr. Lucy. That was my motion as recorded in the minutes.
Thank you, and it was seconded by Selectman Clark, does he second this?
Second.
Thank you. So we'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Trask?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
I would like to see the Attorney General's, I did not see the email file tonight, so I'm going to not vote right now. I didn't see the emails that Keith sent this afternoon.
Well, I don't think we're going to question the Attorney General's ruling in those two cases. So we're rectifying the vote of that night.
Rectifying the vote to what?
Because we didn't take a roll call vote, just on that night.
On that night.
So we're taking a roll call vote tonight, and the Attorney General's Office will determine if this is proper.
Right, so we're going through all the localities, what we're supposed to be doing, by Town Council, and then it's in the Attorney General's hands now.
It will be.
It will be, yeah, because I'd like to see what that email said too.
Okay, so at the moment, we're just rectifying the vote of September twenty ninth, in which you voted yes. So now I'm calling you by roll call to vote.
To accept those minutes?
No, to accept the motion I made.
To reconsider.
On September twenty ninth, I made a motion directing the Town Manager to send a reply to the Attorney General's Office based on Mr. Lucy's complaint at that time, in which, instead of a roll call vote, we took a voice vote or a.
So we're taking a vote again, only by roll call?
Okay, I accept.
So I need a yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Selectman Clark?
Yes.
Yes, Bennett, yes, passes five oh.
Mr. Chairman, just for completeness, I also made a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Correct. So there's a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting, is there a second?
Second.
No, it's okay. Mr. Clark, to adjourn the meeting?
I'm hoping we're adjourning that meeting, not this one.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Mills?
Yes.
I didn't say Trask before you voted, Trask?
Yes.
Mills, Bennett, yes.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the minutes as modified this evening of September twenty ninth to indicate roll call votes for all three motions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you. Any other public, new public business?
Yes, Dan, excuse me.
Yes.
There are representatives of the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee meeting, committee here tonight, they wish to speak to the presentation of a community yard sign, which has been designed, and also the existence of a bumper sticker contest, which is one of the two projects of the Human Rights Commission. So whether it's now or.
Oh, no, that's under new business now is the time. Bill? Graham? Wish to speak before us?
Bill Graham. Bob Damer.
Bob, yes?
We would just have many of the human rights.
Could you move to the microphone, and at your discretion, you can move.
And one, I'm sorry, would you wipe off the microphone, Mr. Lucy did not, there's some wipes there.
Yes, he did.
Did he? Oh, okay, I didn't notice, I'm sorry, okay.
Bob, we'll go first.
Sponsored by the Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee, the goal of the bumper sticker art contest is to promote inclusion, acceptance, and basic human rights in the Danvers community and beyond. The contest is open to all Danvers residents enrolled in any school grades six through ten. We expect to draw from the public, private, and homeschool populations, including Landmark and Beverly School for the Death. Public notice has been made of the contest. Ball is rolling, the Beverly School for the Death has emailed that their art department is already eagerly assisting students there. Designs are to be sent to Eileen Page, Subcommittee's staff liaison. The bumper sticker designs will be judged by a panel of five. A five hundred dollar cash prize is being offered. The prize money has been donated by a private individual. Information on how to enter and full contest rules are available at the town website. The deadline for submissions is twelve P M, November thirteenth. A notice of the bumper sticker competition and prize winner will be sent to the same leading news and social media sites. Bill, you want to give the history?
Thank you. I'd like to give a little bit of the history of how this came to be. It was like a year and a half ago, we had a presentation of Reliance Peace posters to the Selectmen, and that was very well received, and that kind of got us talking about how we might be able to do something with the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee that would be somewhat similar, and the idea of the bumper sticker came out of that. It took us quite a while before we finally brought it before the committee and got Subcommittee appointed, which was the three of us who are standing here. Bob has just shared with you how the contest will work, thank you.
And I just have smaller versions of these, but I don't know if you want them because of COVID. I'm happy to give them to, oh, you've all got the.
We have, thank you.
Okay, if anyone wants them, I've got extras. You'll see these around town, if you've got kids in the school or relatives.
Speak to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, if you've got kids in the school, if you know of any students in grade six through twelve, we'd love to have their input and their creativity. So I'll leave some of these on one of the desks if you want to take one. The other project, the other project we're doing is a Danvers unity yard sign. They did something similar in Beverly, they did it as a fundraiser, and they went through their city to do it. It was very well received, they sold many of them and did a big fundraiser and were able to donate money to multiple causes. But because there's been some controversy about things going on in town, there's been an outcry for unity in our community lately. And I was one of the ones that didn't really want to wait to bring it up through the town, and we just got some people in the community who were interested in doing a yard sign, just talking about unity and bringing the town of Danvers together. We came up with this sign, which I don't know if you have this either, which I'm happy to give out copies of this as well. It just says, "We are Danvers, unity in our community," and then it says, "Hate has no home here." We ended up getting the initial, there were some people who were just going to pay for it, it was all done privately, but then the Friends of the Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee decided to fund the project. So we've already sold about fifty of them, we're just not really selling them, we're asking for donations, they'll be available to anybody who wants one, to put one up in their yard. And again, we're just trying to do something to bring the community together again, closer together, without some of the controversy that's been going on in the town. So, I don't know, does anyone have any questions on that, it was kind of a last minute proposition? Right, is there a place I can leave these, or do you want me not to leave them because of COVID?
Probably downstairs on the way out.
Okay.
There might be, I think there's a table of some sort you could leave them on.
Okay, sure.
I think by the entrance.
Dan, may I just say that if there is anybody in the room that has a business or access to a bulletin board, please take one and post one, we're still trying to get notice of the contest out around. So anybody that can help us, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. A public hearing will be held on the application of GMA Corp., one twenty-six Newbury Street. Adriana Travoloni, manager for a transfer of an all-alcoholic Carmen Vicula's license. At that location, this license previously held by Triple T Cafe Inc., D B A Colletries. And who's here to speak to this? Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Adriana Travoloni.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, my name is Attorney Paul Delory, I'm representing the applicant Adriana Travoloni, who is the principal in GMA Corporation, who will be the holder of the license. I'm assisted tonight by my son, Attorney Andrew Delory, who's in my office, who has copies of all of the documentation that I had previously submitted to Ms. Ellsworth. I'd like to introduce Adriana Travoloni, her husband, Richard Travoloni, both of them are residents of the town of Danvis. They're here tonight seeking a transfer of the license presently held at one twenty-six Newbury Street by a restaurant, I'm sure you're all familiar with, Colletries. This is the transfer to a corporation called GMA Corporation. Adriana is the sole director, officer, and shareholder of this corporation. I've submitted a package with all of the detail and the financing, and I thought with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd just summarize it because it is quite lengthy. There's actually two transactions that will take place simultaneously. One, there'll be a sale of the land where Colletries is located, and secondly, there'll be a sale of all business assets. The total price, the total consideration for the sale is one million, seven hundred thousand dollars. These will be financed in different methods. The land, the value will be one million, six hundred and fifty thousand. That will cover the property at one twenty-six Newbury Street and an unimproved lot behind the building on Four Armory Road. My client has put down a deposit of thirty thousand dollars, the balance will be one million, six hundred and twenty thousand. I'll address that in a minute. The sale of the business assets will be fifty thousand dollars. And all those assets include covenants not to compete, but most important for this board tonight, the liquor license. The deposit has been ten thousand dollars, there's a balance due of forty thousand dollars. So the total balance that's due at closing will be one million, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. My clients will put down six hundred thousand dollars. That'll be, that'll be, the source of that will be a sale of two properties that they own in Revere. One has already closed last week, one is scheduled to close, I believe, on the twenty-second of October. The balance, and I know this is another obviously important point for this board, of one million, sixty thousand dollars, will be held in a promissory note made payable to C L C Trust. Now that's a trust owned and operated by the present principals of Colletries, who are here this evening, Mr. Colletry and Mr. Lapola, Ralph Colletry, Joseph Lapola. The terms of the note's quite simple, it's a five percent payment, a five percent interest rate over thirty-six months. There will be a one hundred and eighty-day moratorium before the applicant is required to begin to pay to allow for build-out, change, whatever he may do. Now, we haven't, at this point, decided on it, we're in what's called the due diligence period, we're under sort of a strict timeline, so this is why we wanted to come forward tonight, when we did. But that certainly will be addressed at some point. These assets will be secured by a mortgage on the real estate held by these gentlemen, and also by an all asset security agreement. So they will have all assets and the real estate tied up to secure their loan. As I said, the license will be held by GMA, but the property will be owned by a limited liability company called one twenty-six Newbury North LLC. The sole member and manager of that is Richard Travoloni. I do want to point out that there's a slight error in my narrative, but we had originally applied to the Secretary of State for the name one twenty-six Newbury Street LLC. We did it online, as you have to, and it took a couple of days to generate, but we got a prompt back from the Secretary that stated that the name is not available. So we had to file an amendment, I had already submitted the papers. So the present owner of the real estate will be one twenty-six Newbury North LLC. But essentially, in simplest terms, Ms. Travoloni will be the principal in the corporation holding the license, her husband will be the sole principal in the real estate. What's important about these couple is that this is very similar to a structure that they presently own, they presently own a restaurant in. They presently own a restaurant in Boston. They own a restaurant called Giacomo's on Hanover Street in the north end. It's an iconic restaurant. Perhaps many of you have been there. It's characterized by long lines of people on Hanover Street. They have reasonable prices and delicious food. Mr. and Mrs. Travoloni hope to take what's always been fine cuisine at Colletries, but enhance that with their menu from Giacomo's and continue that fine tradition. What about the applicants themselves? Adriana is a naturalized American citizen. She began as a waitress at Ricciato's, which is a restaurant owned by Mr. Travoloni's father in Boston, and she advanced to be the dining room manager of the establishment. That was between 2007 and 2012. And they have two small children who are in the public schools in Danvers. She took time off to raise them when they were small. When the opportunity presented itself last year to purchase Giacomo's on Hanover Street, she went back into the restaurant business, and she's the manager of the establishment at Giacomo's. So what's going to happen is she's going to be the manager here in Danvers because it's so close to home if she needs to come in. They live literally within walking distance. And Mr. Travoloni is going to take over as the full-time manager in Giacomo's in Boston. So they'll have split responsibilities. That application for transfer is already in the works with Boston Council. I'm not involved in that. Giacomo's presently has a beer and wine license. Ms. Travoloni is tip certified. And I might add that when she was home with her children, she still worked administratively to help her husband in terms of running Ricciato's at the time. Richard Travoloni has grown up in the business. He's been in the restaurant business all of his life. His father has. He has aunts and uncles. He has an aunt who owned a restaurant called Felicia's in the north end. You may know that. His father's restaurant is called Ricciato's. He's been in many capacities in the restaurant business, as a dining room manager, even a chef. And for the last 26 years, he's been the general manager of Ricciato's. So what happened during all of this, it was kind of a coincidence, but this is what happened. His dad got sick. He had to spend more time helping out at Ricciato's, and he was kind of split duties, running back and forth between Giacomo's and Ricciato's. His younger brother, Michael, is now going to transition and take over Ricciato's. He'll go full-time to Giacomo's. Ms. Travoloni will go full-time to the Danvers establishment. So she'll be there 40 hours as it indicates. And the other thing I'd like to point out is that Ms. Travoloni, when she applied for her license in Boston, was approved unanimously by the Boston Licensing Board. So just to sum up, if I may, this is a great opportunity for them, but I see it as a great opportunity for Danvers to have this restaurant producing this type of food. I think it'd be a great establishment. It's close to their home. They're members of the community, and I hope that the board will look favorably on it. It would really be an exciting opportunity for everybody concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. So to be clear, there is or there is not a signed purchase and sales?
Yes, oh, yes. They're submitted with the works order, yes.
I didn't get it.
Yeah. There's a signed purchase and sale agreement. There's a signed asset purchase agreement, and attached to those agreements are all the proposed promissory note, mortgage, security agreement, et cetera. Yes.
So town clerk, is all the paperwork in order?
Yes.
And I also have copies...
Because I reached out to you and asked you about the purchase and sales, and you didn't forward it. You didn't confirm there was one.
I have copies of everything tabbed, if you'd like to have that book to look at.
No, I just, I want the town clerk to confirm that everything is in order and that the proper paperwork is attached. Because the financing is, I won't say unique, but certainly not straightforward in my mind.
Well, I see an asset purchase agreement, real estate purchase and sale agreement with attachments for loan documents.
Okay, that's, thank you. And on the application, it says the DBA is to be determined?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
What else is unfinished?
That's it.
Everything else is agreed upon?
Everything is agreed upon.
And signed?
Yes. It is signed. Let me just say about the DBA, I'm not trying to be coy in any way, but what we're hoping for is to negotiate for the use of a certain DBA. I don't have a non-disclosure agreement with the attorney who holds the mark, but I've agreed with him that I wouldn't represent to you that we're going to be able to use it. We're very close to allowing it. The name Colletries, if you look through the paperwork, he is going to have the exclusive use of that name as part of the sale, but that carries a lot of goodwill with it, there's no doubt. But he and his wife are looking to sort of start their own brand. And once those, once that negotiation is finished, we hope to come forward again and say, this will be the, you know, this will be the DBA. Because the DBA is covered by a trademark, and we have to be very careful on how we negotiate that.
Okay, thank you. So we'll open up to questions from the board members. Mr. Mills?
No questions. Thank you. Nice presentation.
Thank you very much.
Gardner?
The normal questions I ask about tip certification, hours on premises are already in here. I'm satisfied with those. When it comes to motion, I'll have some comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Maureen?
Great presentation. What about hours of operation? Have you come to...
Still working on that. Do you want to weigh in on that?
Still working on that, too. Okay. That's about it right now.
Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you. I was very impressed with the presentation and the amount of paperwork we had. I would also, at this point, thank Mr. Colletry and Mr. Lapola for the great, great contribution they've made to the community over the many, many years that they owned the restaurant. They did a great job. They're great people, and I'm very happy they found a amenable person to take over the licensing business. Good luck to you if we voted.
Thank you, Bill. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public have any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, we accept, close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? What's the will of the board?
I'm sorry, I did have one question I thought about, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please go ahead.
It's a topsy-turvy world right now. If things work out, how long would build-out take? And when would you want to open if the governor opens the availability?
They'd like to open as soon as possible, but we're trying to be realistic. Part of the negotiation to, the promissory note, if you look at it in the package, has a 180-day moratorium before the payments start. It doesn't mean that they're going to be eliminated. They're going to be capitalized on the other end. We get that. But realistically, it'd probably be April, I think April or May before we'd be able to open.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the application as presented, and consider that in relation to our liquor license guideline regulations, we consider that the opening date be May of 2021 before any clocks start. We have certain non-use timeframes and things of that nature. I want to give you enough time, and given that not only May, but also that the governor has opened restaurant use by that time as well, whichever comes first, whichever May or the governor's opening. So my motion is to accept the application, and if the clock starts in relation to our liquor license guidelines, no sooner than May.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
No second.
Second over here, Maureen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you. Good luck, Ralph, and your family. Thank you for your service to the community for many years. Appreciate it. A public hearing will be held on the application of Packaging Center Inc., DBA Super, Stauffin Sharp, 301 Newbury Street. William Hanlon, manager for change of offices at that location. And who's here to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am Eugene Richard, here for the applicant.
Welcome, Gene.
Thank you. This application to approve a change of officers involves the corporation that holds the license. There will be no change in ownership and no change in operations. There's going to be a new president, Mr. Gordon Reed, a new treasurer, Mark Messier, and we're adding an assistant secretary, who actually is not new, I don't think, but was never on. Her name is Maria Silvestri. Mr. Reed is going to become a director, and three of the formerly approved directors are leaving the board. That's Mark McGowan, Stephen Kinsel, and Dirk John Verterhost. And those are the changes we're asking to be approved.
Thank you. Questions, Bill?
No questions. Thank you.
Maureen?
No questions.
Gardner?
I have no questions. Thank you.
David?
Nothing, thank you.
No questions. This is a public hearing. Anyone have any questions in the audience?
Make a motion to reclose the public hearing.
Second?
Bill and David, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hmm? Right. So what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the application as presented. Second?
There's a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Thank you. The board will consider requests from the attorney representing the project at 44 Maple Street to extend their license to occupy the right-of-way at that location until not later than February 1, 2021. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of Nick and Joyce Pashudo, the owners of the property. Nick Pashudo is here this evening. Also with me is Ben Pyburn of East Wind Builders, the general contractor for the project. And we are requesting a second three-month extension of the period of time under the license for occupancy of the sidewalk for purposes of scaffolding and staging. And the reason for that, I would like Ben Pyburn to bring you up to date on what's happened since he was here in June and received an extension until October 31st. He has made good progress, but of course, there's been some delays COVID-related in getting supplies and materials and things like that to proceed forward. The project is proceeding, but we are requesting an extension until February 1st, and I'd like Ben Pyburn to address the board and update you on the status and the need for the extension.
Thank you.
So like Nancy had said, the project is moving along. The steel erection, as I'm sure you can tell, is complete. The first two floors of concrete are poured and finished. The elevator shaft has been completed. And basically, the reason for the second delay is that we're seeing a lot of turmoil in the lumber market, and our structural joists that we're doing almost six weeks ago still haven't come to the site, and we're not going to see those for another two weeks now. So that's the reason that it's pushed back the progress of the project. But we're anticipating that once those structural floor joists do land on the site, that we're looking at about four to six weeks to finish the envelope of the exterior of the building, which is primarily what we're looking to protect the pedestrians from, is the work along Maple Street, you know, to keep any debris or anything from hitting any pedestrians that walk by. And other than that, the project is moving along well. Other materials are all ordered. Everything's been purchased. It's really out of our hands as far as the structural joists and when they get here. They're produced custom for the job, so there's not much we can do. But we're ready, and we're working on other things in the meantime, and we anticipate that when they do get to the site, like I said, things will progress as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Questions, Gardner?
So, I'm just trying to get the time. Is this extension for three months? It's now October 5th, and you're saying no later than February 1st?
Right.
Okay.
The last extension ran through October 31st.
And that was granted on 6/20, so actually, you had a four-month extension and now a three-month extension.
The last, we were here in advance...
Right.
...of the expiration.
Okay.
So it was first, it was a three-month extension that ran until October 31st.
Yep. And I do recall that the evening I did ask pointedly if we thought this was going to be it, and we were sure it was, and that the steelwork was the mitigating factor. That came in actually at the same time he thought it would come in and start going up. I'm just reluctant only because this started on 6/9, and now we're talking 18 months of almost two years of encumbrance of the sidewalk. I have no questions. I'll hold my comments till it comes time for motion. Thank you.
David?
I support the request. The, I assume the owner wants it built and open as soon as possible because it costs money every day that it is in. So I just assume they're going to do the best they can to get it done and get the sidewalk on the sidewalk. So what I guess, whatever they think that they need in order to finish it, they'll go as fast as they can because that's what the dollar says. Makes more sense.
Bill?
I'm concerned about this project and the way it, what it's looking like downtown because of that. I think it's the most ugly project since Nissan's building was vacant, and the cellar hall was there for several years until it was, the apron was built. I've been comparing this building's construction with the Cherry Street Fish Market, which is a very similar-sized building at least. They've got their steel up, they've got their exterior walls up, they've got the utilities done, all since they, since you people started this building. And I don't know, you say lumber turmoil. I don't know whether, what the problem is, but why does one developer in one time, within a half-mile...
I can answer that.
...able to get his construction done on time?
That project's not similar to ours.
I mean, our building's pinched between two existing buildings, so it becomes a lot more complicated when you're constructing within two imperfect abutting buildings. So I can understand if you're on a freestanding lot, it's a lot easier to build a building than it is to sandwich one in between two other buildings, which would explain why we're behind them.
With that explanation, I will only vote for this extension if we attach a rider to it that the $300 a day fine start after February 1st of next year, because I feel that this particular project has not been going along anywhere near as rapidly as it could. And I've been watching it now for especially the last three weeks, and there's very few people working there compared to the other project where they've been going out full bore. And granted, you may not be able to build if you don't have the materials, but I'm questioning why the materials are so scarce, because there's other construction going on all over the North Shore, and it doesn't seem to be delayed like this one has. And it's such a blight to the downtown area.
You all set, Bill?
Yes.
So from what I heard is if there's a motion, you'd like it to stipulate no further extensions?
If, I will vote for something if we have a imposed fine of $300 a day beyond this February 1st date that we want to have.
Just to be clear. Thank you. Maureen, questions?
I totally understand, you know. It isn't I.S.O.A. I'm sure the owners want it up, we want it up, the citizens of the town of Danvers want it up. We are in very unusual times in my profession. I'm constantly seeing, so I do understand what you're saying, builders asking for extensions, consumers asking for rate-lock extensions because of the shortage and the factories. So I would like to propose that we do grant this, but maybe we have Attorney McCann and Ben come back, you know, halfway through with progress and see how things are going, give us some documentation that we can, you know, talk about on where they're exactly at, you know, is it still, are they still going for the February 1st, or does it look sooner? That's what I would like to see.
What's the will of the board?
I'll make a motion for then the sake of discussion.
Yep.
I move we accept the application for an extension with the understanding that as starting February 2nd, there would be the $300 a day fine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Gardner?
So again, the reason for delay as presented by the applicant was materials and not the uniqueness of building in between two existing buildings. So I think that, I think that Mr. Clark's point about other...
So I think that, I think that Mr. Clark's point about other local, local businesses being able, and others, being able to secure materials and build in similar or shorter timeframes is sound. I don't think I want to get into the business of reviewing order documents, dates, delivery dates, so on and so forth. I trust that they're going to do their due diligence and make sure they can get open as soon as possible. But I think that there needs to be an incentive to do so. We've been, we provided a lot of latitude at this time. And we gave them originally, I'm trying to remember how, nine months, and now we've extended it another six at this point if we go forward with this motion. So I would like to, I'd like to see the scaffolding down. And no more than I'm sure they want to, I would like to see the building up and presentable. Inside work can happen inside after the outside is, is secure and completed. And I would like to make that the focus. So that's my motion and my comments on it.
Other comments, David?
Do you have a comment?
Maureen?
I mean, like I said, I would go for the extension, but I'm not in favor of the three-hundred-dollar-a-day fine. You know, I'd like some, have them come back before us, and then we discuss it then.
Well, the motion is that we extend it to February first, and then the fines start.
No, I didn't, well, we want to talk about it at that point and see, then we discuss it as a board. You know, where, where, where are they at? And then if the fine, then we can talk about a fine, if so be, you know, so be it. I'd like to.
Bill?
So I don't know how to do that motion.
Well, the motion is made.
Okay.
We're voting, we're discussing the motion that's made.
Okay.
Bill?
No, no further comment.
Okay. So we have a motion that's been seconded. We'll take a vote on that motion. All in favor of Gardner's motion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Four to one.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
The board will consider a third, one-year extension of an appointment to the Davis Housing Authority Board. Nothing seems to get done in the timely manner. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It feels like deja vu. It's because, as you said, this is the third time the board has been asked to extend this appointment. As is noted in the background materials, state law was changed, I believe, in early two thousand seventeen, perhaps late two thousand sixteen, modifying the way that housing and trust boards are assembled. And one of the elected positions from the community at large was to be converted to a tenant position. DHCD issued draft guidance on that. The Secretary of State has some issues with the way that the new guidance was issued. And as a result, for the better part of three and a half years now, there has been no guidance offered. There are mechanisms by which towns have modified their own local processes, but in this case, we have the unanimous support of the rest of the Housing Authority Board and a candidate who is willing to continue to serve in an interim fashion until the regulations are ultimately finalized. And I did include in your, in your package tonight a copy of a letter that this board sent last year to DHCD encouraging them to finalize that process. Because I think everybody involved recognizes that having tenants who live in the Housing Authority building serving on the board is a good idea. So the request from the Housing Authority is to extend Mr. Eisenhower's appointment by one additional year. And we've also taken liberty to draft a, another letter from this board to the Department of Housing Development encouraging them to focus on this next year.
Thank you. Questions, Bill?
No questions, thank you.
Maureen?
Dan, if I'm on the board, I can't vote for this, can I?
Probably not.
Okay.
You can reclose yourself.
Yeah, I'll exclude myself.
Yes, Steve?
You are able to vote on it.
My chance?
You acknowledge that you serve on that board, so you're able to vote, yes.
So I
Any questions?
No.
Gardner?
Yes, though the agenda says for the extension by one year, the statement in the letter by Ms. Eisenhower says one year or until a tenant is appointed by the commissioner. I would, if I make a motion, I would make a motion to that effect. If, for example, the commissioner decided next month to appoint a tenant, I would not want that tenant to wait eleven months to assume the role that they're being assigned to. So I will make a motion to that effect.
Thank you. David?
I think I'm in favor of this.
Okay, so what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the reappointment of this position to Mr. Eisenhower for one year or until the tenant is elected as a commissioner, whichever is shorter of the two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Maureen, thank you. Discussion? Hearing and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you. And you have the letter. Mr. Barthing will send out, thank you. The board will consider appointing a hearing officer related to a dangerous dog complaint for findings of facts and recommendation to the board consistent with mass general law. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you were provided a number of documents tonight in support of this agenda item. As you recall, the town received a dangerous dog complaint in two thousand eighteen. And at that point in time, the police chief was appointed as a hearing officer to represent this board at the statutory required hearing. That was done in partnership with the town attorney. And a transcript of that hearing, as well as draft recommendations, were then returned to this board for deliberation and disposition on the issue. You were provided a copy of Mass General Law Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, which details the requirements of the hearing authority, which is the select board, as well as the options offered to it under the law in terms of remedying any situation that they may find after reading the transcript and hearing the recommendation. So the, as is noted here, there were two complaints filed for the same incident in late September. And the police department identified several other police reports from the past year and a half related to these dogs. Those were also provided to the board as background material tonight. But the question tonight before the board is if they would like to proceed with appointing the police chief or a designee. I discussed this today with Acting Chief Lovell, that is still out. And if that's the will of the board, they would coordinate with both the complainant and the owners of the dog to make sure that they can find an evening that's agreeable to everybody, and they would conduct a hearing as they did in two thousand eighteen and then report back to this board.
And who did you say you're going to recommend?
It would probably be either Chief Ambrose or Acting Chief Lovell, depending on the timing of the hearing.
Thank you. David, any questions?
Yeah, I thought, I thought that Steve said chief or designee. In other words, I would hate to label this on the police chief or the acting chief with very competent people in the department that perhaps would designate as a hearing officer rather than the chief or deputy chief.
It would either be Captain, Captain Lovell or the chief.
Either one. Gardner?
No, I have no questions, thank you.
Maureen?
No questions.
Bill?
No, I'm going to be supporting this with the stipulation that the hearing officer be either the chief or Captain Jamie Lovell, who is the acting chief.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the, as of an appointing, an hearing officer for this dangerous dog complaint and appoint Police Chief Pat Ambrose and/or Captain Jamie Lovell, Acting Chief, who would, at the discretion of the police chief as to who makes the decision.
Is there a second?
Second, the motion?
Second. Comment, David? Nope. Comments, Maureen? Nope, Bill, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you.
Thank you.
The board will review a draft of the October twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-twenty-first special town meeting warrant. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board received a draft of the warrant and appendices with their packets for the meeting tonight. For those watching at home, the warrant is posted to the town website. So if anybody wants to go to the town website, they'll be able to find the draft and follow along. There are seven articles on this warrant for consideration this evening, one of which is a citizen's petition. And we have several staff members in the audience tonight to speak to a number of the more technical articles. We have Town Engineer Stephen King and the Director of Land Use and Community Services, Aaron Henry, who will, who will jump in momentarily as we get into the, as I said, the technical components of the, of the warrant. So
Before we start, just, board members, do you want to vote on each article as we go along?
Yes, please. There's only seven.
Okay, so we'll take each one individually. Thank you. All right, Mr. Manager?
So can I just ask a question? We're going to vote on each article.
To forward or not forward?
To forward, to
Favorable to FENCOM.
Okay.
Or unfavorable to FENCOM.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a clarification. We can vote favorable, unfavorable, or no action. Is that correct?
Correct.
Those are the three options.
Yep.
Thank you.
And just as a point of clarification, the, this is the first town meeting, and I'll say, welcome to the show, but the, a citizen's petition goes to the floor of town meeting regardless of the position of the selectman or the finance committee and all of the other items in this agenda. If this board votes no, they come off the agenda before they go to the finance committee.
So to that point, we'll just hear the petition and take no action?
The board typically votes on citizen's petitions, and they generally accompany the article to the finance committee so that the finance committee is aware of that. But the six, the six non-petition articles, if this board voted against them, they would come off before, so the FENCOM would not consider those items.
Okay.
So it's for us to go to town meeting, though?
So it'll start, this is the selectman's draft warrant. If a positive vote here will send an article to the finance committee, and they will make a recommendation that will then become the main motion on the floor of town meeting.
The town meeting, okay.
But a citizen's petition by law goes, goes to town meeting. It has a path to town meeting regardless of what the board
Got it, okay. All right, just one, bye. Thank you.
Thank you. So the first article is related to proceeds that the town has received in the past two years. Based on a two thousand eighteen regulation from the Department of Public Utilities, a per-ride assessment fee was introduced for all ride-hailing transactions that originate within the town of Dammers. And so the article before you this evening seeks to request the town meeting appropriate those proceeds from two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, which totaled twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty cents from the special revenue fund where they're currently sitting into the senior and social services transportation revolving fund so that those funds can be used to support and offset the cost of providing rides to seniors and residents who need, who need them within the community.
Questions, Maureen?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions. I think it's a good use of this money.
I do too. Gardner?
I'm also with this.
And David? Okay, so all in favor of Article One being forwarded favorably?
I'll make that motion if we need a motion.
Please.
I make the motion that we accept the article favorably, pass it forward favorably.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you. Number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this article was prepared at your request, and this is an article that the, would ask the town meeting to consider expressing its appreciation to Dammers' first responders, reaffirming its commitment to providing them with the tools, training, and equipment they need, recognizing the role they've played during this global pandemic, and expressing condolences for those first responders who die in the line of duty.
Thank you. David, questions?
Very nice. I agree.
Thank you. Gardner?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that whenever we refer to in the narrative or if it's in the actual language, the thin blue line altered American flag, we call the thin blue line altered American flag design. There is a question on whether that is an altered flag itself or not, one that we won't answer or it, it, it's not legally binding either way. Some people feel it is, some people feel it isn't. But just so that we don't step on any unintentional landmines, I would suggest we call it the altered American flag design. Just a recommendation.
I think the town manager heard that.
Thank you.
Maureen?
So this is Article Two to support our first responders.
Correct.
Yes, I'm in favor of that.
Bill?
I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I make a motion that we support Article Two, supporting the first responders.
Mr. Chairman, if I were to order, are we going to ask if there's any public input before we make our motion?
Yeah, if somebody wants to raise their hand, sure. Thank you. Go right ahead. Speak up because I can't see too well today with the glasses fogged up.
It'll be over soon. Glad you're all seated. I'm going to agree with Mr. Trask. The use of the language altered American flag is a bit of a dog whistle. One of the claims that we've heard numerous times, and we, by we, I mean the group organized to restore respect for first responders in Dammers, is that this is a modification, an alteration, or this says altered American flag. It is not. I own several of these flags. I bought them as thin blue line flags. I did not buy a red, white, and blue American flag and alter that flag. That would be a violation of flag code. That would be a misuse of our American flag. Flag code applies to American flags. Thin blue line flag is not an American flag. So I agree with Mr. Trask, and I'd like to see you go one step further by using language that just says, to remove the so-called thin blue line flag, if you'd like to. But any association with this flag to the American flag, I think is just a call to, to, to associate this as a violation of flag code somehow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did all members have a comment to make? I mean, you're all set?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the language altering with the modification, thin blue, thin blue line altered American flag design be recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, none?
Opposed.
Opposed, four to one.
Just a point, is that on the, is that on the article itself or the, the language?
I'm, I'm speaking, I don't see that that expression is in the article language. I see it in the narrative, the, the explanation narrative.
Correct.
And, and I will say that because there are multiple versions or interpretations of thin blue line flag, I want to be crystal clear as to whom we are speaking to, which is
I'm just trying to, I want to clarify, is this a, is it a five-o vote to send this article to the town meeting? But you were opposed to the language change?
The language, correct.
But the article itself has unanimous support?
We're voting on the article itself. The language change suggested
Understood, thank you.
We're not voting on the language.
Then I'll be, I'll be more clear in my, my
Please.
in my motion. I move we accept Article Two as presented inside the black box. The language is presented in the black box.
Correct. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's five-o.
For the clarification again?
Gardner suggested language change in the narrative, which is not what we're voting on.
Okay.
Number three.
Article three, I'm going to call Mr. Henry up to the microphone. There is, in the, in the appendix section of your warrant, a fairly lengthy amendment to the town's wetland protection bylaw, which, as Mr. Henry clarified for me today, was both adopted in nineteen eighty-eight and has not been amended since. So staff has spent a considerable amount of time going through that and reviewing state law. And I can see from Mr. Henry that if I keep talking, he's going to sit back down, so I'm going to stop there and let him speak.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening. Nice to see you all again. As Mr. Barthing noted, the town adopted the Wetland Protection Bylaw in nineteen eighty-eight and has not amended it since. In the intervening time, the state has amended the Wetlands Protection Act that this bylaw is kind of nested under a couple of times, and some related regulations that it publishes have been amended several more times. So while these changes look rather extensive, it's really a, just a correction to make sure that the local bylaw is consistent with the terms and latest science that the state's act and its regulations are using and do apply to what we have to do at the local level. We balance that out a little bit with, you'll see a section here on major and minor. We see a lot of small projects for single and two-family homes that come forward. We see a lot of small projects for single and two-family homes that come forward. So we took this opportunity to try to clarify that, to simplify that a little bit, what those standards are and what's expected of those folks. Again, we spend a lot of time on very small projects and we try to clean that up as best we could. There's a companion piece to this that the staff has been working with the commission on, its regulations, which were last amended in 2002. So the commission itself, should this go forward, will also update its regs. There is no requirement for a public hearing, but the commission has discussed this at two different meetings, including the regulations, and they obviously support this going forward. So I can't get too into the weeds as Mr. Fields and his staff, Georgia Pendergast, have been working hand and glove on this, but I certainly can take a high-level question on it and I'm happy to get any answers that you may need if you have an in-depth question on it.
David, any questions?
No, they've done a great job of trying to update the bylaw. I was around when our bylaw was initially adopted and it's about time. Nice job and thank you very much for your effort.
Thank you.
Gardner?
No, and I appreciate the red-line version to help us understand exactly who's taken out and put in. So I have, I've reviewed this and I have no questions. Thank you.
Maureen?
A lot of work has gone into this and we talked about, I think, some other meetings about the bylaws and clarification and modifications. Great job, I mean, I learned some, some information from this.
If there was one upside to the lockdown, it gave us time to kind of dive into some of this stuff that a lot of the day-to-day stuff can keep us from. So we really focused hard on using the, the lockdown time as best we could to dive into these things and research them. So appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, no, very good. Thank you.
Bill?
I just want to thank Mr. Henry and his staff for their extensive work that they've done on this article. And obviously, this is one of the benefits of COVID-19 and the kind of shortened.
Not too many of them, but maybe.
You've got more time to do this kind of stuff. It's great. Thank you very much.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Zubrick, Precinct Seven, Town Meeting Member. I have a general question basically on all of these, and I did talk to Aaron just before we entered, but this wetlands protection bylaw revisions, it's not adopting the original because we went through a lot of hassles trying to get that implemented. This, the question I asked Mr. Henry is, how has the public had any input into what these revisions are? Are these just technical revisions or are they, what are the unintended consequences of this bylaw? Because this is gonna become a rule that we're going to establish and we're going to have our contractors and developers follow. So that, that's my major question. And, and one thing that I noticed is that a lot of these warrant articles that have been placed on the October 26th town meeting have, I guess to me, they've been rushed and pushed into this warrant for this town meeting. So my question is, what are the unintended consequences and has the public had input into these revisions?
As I said, unlike zoning bylaws, general bylaws.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry, but I, I can't hear you. Can't understand.
As I said, zoning bylaws require a public hearing by statute. General bylaws do not. Nonetheless, the Conservation Commission has discussed this at its, I believe, the last two or three of its publicly advertised meetings. The feedback we've gotten is based on a lot of the small projects that we spend a lot of time on, so I can't tell you that we've gotten comments. I'd have to defer to my colleagues if we've received specific comments on these regs, but I will tell you, we have looked over the record of the years to try to distill from our experience where the hang-ups have been for applicants and staff alike and try to improve those and minimize those. The unintended consequences, Mr. Zubrick, if I knew what they were, they wouldn't be any. So I'm not gonna promise you that there's not a typo or an inadvertent issue here. I would like to say we've got it 100% right, but I don't believe that will be true. The time will probably prove me wrong if I were to say that. So we have done our absolute best. We have reviewed the files as, as robustly as possible and we are putting forward a product that we think is an improvement for small projects, for the environment, and for ultimately the town.
Well, all I'm, all I'm concerned about is what effect this will have on our general public residents that are trying to develop or expand or whatever they need to do because we have some wetlands and rivers and, you know, other facilities that are drastically affected by this law to date. And now what we're doing is we're making more revisions, but I'm just concerned that have we had enough input from the residents? Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, all set for a motion?
Make a motion that we forward Article Three, I support Article Three and forward it to the finance committee with a favorable recommendation.
Second a motion?
Motion and a second? No discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, thank you.
Thank you.
Number four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While, while Town Engineer Stephen King makes his way up to the microphone for Article Four, which is an amendment to the stormwater management and land disturbance bylaw, I will, I will simply note, similar to the last item, there have been some changes at the state and federal level since our bylaw was adopted. We also have two key new zoning districts that were adopted and are not necessarily fully consistent with our existing bylaw. And Mr. King can walk through some of the recommended changes from the Engineering Division.
Thank you, Mr. Barthin. Thank you, Board.
Welcome.
Good evening. As Steve mentioned before, in my short time that I've been in Danvers, I've come to see and inspect a lot of subdivisions and site plans that have come through my office. And I noticed a few things that have been off of, haven't really lined up with what our new MS4 permit that we require to follow that was just established in, in 2018. So really, the purpose of making these amendments or bringing these amendments toward you, to you tonight is to, one, reaffirm and enhance the purpose of our bylaw, and that's the protection of local waterways, protection of existing stormwater infrastructure, promote accidental recharge and infiltration within our own, within our own community, and also obviously to protect local residents from unnecessary surface water, surface water runoff and erosion. And just to give you a little bit of background as to how we got to this point, we closely followed the EPA's MS4 system, which is the Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. This was first enacted in 2003. By then, after five years, they issued new, a new draft permit between 2008 and 2010. So these really run every five years. After 2010 draft permits were issued, a new one in 2014 was issued by Massachusetts, by the EPA, again, making more enhancements to their own policies and regulations that they're requiring towns to follow. In that last one in 2014, before myself arriving here in Danvers, there was a lot of, a lot of comments from all the different communities about the amount of extra work, extra maintenance after operations and labor forces that were required to meet the requirements of the, of the new MS4. EPA did review all those comments. It did go to, did go to litigation, eventually with, if they're coming up with the final permit in 2018, which we now have our NIPD's permit. So right now, in two, after, in 2020, we've gone through our second year. So far, we've been able to hit all the minimum control measures. We have learned, speaking with other communities, they are doing a robust auditing program of our, our MS4. So really, we want to try and, and make sure our bylaw can capture everything that they want to see as far as inspections and control of stormwater within the town. So our bylaw was adopted in, in May 16th at the 2011 Annual Town Meeting. Right now, as it stands, it's a, it has provisions to only capture land disturbances of one acre or more. That doesn't mean the property has to be one acre itself. It could be two or three acres if they disturb only an acre of it. So there's a little bit of loophole in there that I've, that I've seen in some of the plans. So you could have a new one-acre site, a ten-acre site. If you disturb less than one acre, you're not required to have a, come in and get a stormwater permit through the Engineering Division for us to inspect and make sure you're meeting all your minimum control measures. And what the purpose of the new bylaw would be was obviously to meet these minimum control measures, which require public education and outreach, public participation, continuing with our illicit discharge detection and elimination program, management of construction site runoff, management of post-construction site runoff from new developments to redevelopments, and obviously internally for ourselves, good housekeeping and municipal operations. So some of the, some of the amendments that were offered up for the changes for the new by, for the bylaw was one, the section one was our introduction. That's basically boiling it down to, we're just gonna align with the, with the EPA's MS4 permit. Everything that's required within that permit is what we want to follow. So basically piggybacking off of that. And section three, some of the definitions, we added and replaced some definitions to provide by more clarity for developers and engineers. Section four, we revised for scope and applicability where we hit certain permit thresholds to define large developments and smaller site plans within the new zoning districts that were just overlaid. We provided more, you know, exemptions, clarifications of little exemptions for the engineers and developers who are seeking exemptions for, from the stormwater, from the bylaw, administratively updating those, those regulations, permit procedures, and then ultimately enforcement for the new fees and penalties for each of the new permits that we're proposing in the amendment. Lastly is two sections that we added in, one called emergency suspension of municipal storm drain system access, and then notification of spills, which were omitted from the previous Some of the definitions that were added into the, into the amendment was referencing to the Clean Water Act, federal standards, introduction of pollutant, what a pollutant is, what we consider a pollutant, recharge, unless you want to promote recharge and what we're looking for, definition of what a stormwater utility is, total maximum daily load, TMTL, which is the occurrence of poor water quality, total suspended salt or TSS, that's what we're trying to remove from our local waterways, wetland resource area, and then obviously wetlands, define, enhance those definitions within the bylaw. So one of the major changes in the, or that were proposed in the amendment is in the scope and applicability. As of right now, we have one permit that's required for disturbance of one acre or more. We're splitting that into a major stormwater management permit and a minor stormwater management permit. The existing stormwater, the, the major one will actually hit on any connection to the Danvers stormwater, stormwater sewer system. Right now, we don't have a permit. If someone wants to connect into our, our drainage system, they're not required to get a permit. Obviously, they have to provide the calculations to us to make sure that our existing infrastructure can handle the new flows, but they're not required to get a permit through us whatsoever. Also, any alteration, disturbance, or development in the new Maple Street and High Street corridor, that's just to obviously catch up with the new zoning districts to make sure that we can see any of the new developments happening in that corridor, that, you know, they're required to come in for a permit, that we're allowed to see their, their calculations or stormwater management plan, post-construction, long-term maintenance plans as well. Again, still keeping with the one ma, with one more, one acre of land disturbance as well, and then all, all definitive subdivision approvals will be required to get a major stormwater permit. For the new minor ma, minor stormwater management permit, this will be for any alteration, disturbance, development, redevelopment project that has less than one acre but greater than 20,000 square feet of disturbance. Any, any project requiring a special permit, any residential with three or more units or condo complexes, any new development on a vacant lot, replacement of existing dwelling, or reconstruction that is 50% more of the existing building footprint, including commercial properties, anything within the flood zone, and especially any area with a higher potential for pollutant loads based on standard five of the Massachusetts Stormwater Management The next section that, there were some amendments, that we made some amendments to, was the administration of waivers section, which basically included redefining the stormwater authority for the town, applying for the stormwater management regulations, which if the bylaw is, is accepted, we will then go into making changes to the, the stormwater regulations, which will then allow the public hearings, get input from the developers for the future changes, the delegation of authority, stormwater management permits, just to confirm how they're supposed to apply for those permits, stormwater utility, if it's, if it's so, it should be enacted through the town, stormwater management manual, which is what the developers will have to be following when they submit their plans and application to the Engineering Division, actions taken by the stormwater authority to approve or disapprove the application of their permit, and then basically appeals and waivers that developers will be able to ask for, and, and that process of how they can get the waiver for their, their, their permit. And lastly is enforcement. Obviously, we had one, one criteria based on the original permit. Now that we have two permits, we split it up into the major stormwater permit for infractions will be first, second, third offense, all $300, and $300 after the third offense. For the minor stormwater management permits, we're given a first offensive warning, second offense $100, third offense $200, fourth and subsequent offenses $300. Now, there's a lot to go over and I'd be happy to take any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Stephen. There's a lot of detail there. Mr. Manager, is it possible somehow in the narrative for Article Four to highlight some of the important changes in Appendix B and reach, direct the town meeting members for additional information to refer to B, but there's a lot of information there, there's a lot of changes, some of them are minor. Just pull out some of the major and put in the narrative.
I can work, we'll work on that with the Engineering Department tomorrow and see if we can.
Thank you.
Move some of that in, in a summary fashion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, to build off your comment, I was gonna make a similar one that what was powerful to you, what you just described to me was, you know, the, the loophole about not disturbing less than one acre, things of those nature, aligning us with the, with the law. But also, I think that the town meeting members have gotten used to seeing the red-line version at the back. So I would recommend that the appendix for this include the red-line version. I realize you're gonna strike a lot, but seeing that, for example, we're gonna change section X seven, or we're gonna modify some section, it would be good to see in context what the modifications and the new language is so that if there's some question about, hey, you dropped this term, is there a reason? It would be helpful. So I would just ask for the consideration that we have the consistency we did in the other article where we have the old language strikeouts, new language, all right there. And to your point, put the salient reasons in the narrative.
I do have several, I do have, Board, I do have that copy with me. There's, I have a couple of different options of how we want to present it, so it's something that I've already created.
Fine, so just attach it with the warrant when it goes out to the town meeting members.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Questions, David?
I think they've done a splendid, splendid job of this, dealing with this technical stuff.
Gardner, any other questions?
No other questions, thank you.
Maureen?
Steve, good. This is all good material. Thank you.
Bill?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, what's, anyone in the audience? Yes, Mark was first.
Well, last one.
Are you ready, Matt? He's on the phone.
You're ready? All right. I'll go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Doug, and Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. A question to Mr. King through you. Concerning this, I think it's section nine where it talks about public hearings, it seems to be a considerable amount of verbiage that's been eliminated, and I'm referring to subsection six. It talks about the ConCom. It talks about the Concom postponing hearings until they have a chance to interact with other boards such as the ZBA, the planning board, and also town departments. That seems to have been eliminated, and all the, all the work stays with the Concom in terms of determining the impact of the proposed, proposed application, so.
Stephen, do you have a response to that?
Is it in section nine?
Yes, section nine, notice and public hearings.
Yes, so basically with the permits, that would still come through the engineering division for review. And if they do trigger a conservation hearing as well, they would still have to apply through a notice of intent.
Right, so my concern is just the ability of the public to participate in that activity. When it's, you know, the engineering working with the Concom, there seem, there's sometimes a disconnect with the public.
Is that the two triggering public hearing part of your, you don't get a separate public hearing, you have a public hearing happening?
I would only, yeah, so if they were to apply for a waiver from not getting a stormwater permit, then they'd have to go through the public hearing process. And then we'd have a public hearing for them to get the waiver.
But there is a way to bypass that in certain circumstances?
No, no, there isn't.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mark?
I'm going to surprise this board because I finally agree with your comments, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Trask's comments, because I don't believe this has been, I hate to say it, exhaustively discussed by the public. The comments on both of these bylaws and revisions to the bylaws are basically done in the administrative offices of the engineering department or the conservation commission, and I haven't heard any discussion on this from the conservation. So I definitely would ask that at least we provide where the changes are, because personally, I don't feel this has been discussed enough. So I, again, I'm going to push my point from the original statement that we're rushing this in. Maybe I'm the only one that feels that way, but I think it deserves input from the general public and from the developers, basically, who are going to be involved. I, you know, I just don't understand it. This is a law that's going to impose fines, and it's going to impose an agreement before it goes to the conservation or after it goes into engineering. I don't know which is heads or tails anymore. So I would recommend that we do not forward this one until it has a good public hearing and airing. Thank you.
Thank you. No, okay. Board members, what's the will of the board on Article Four?
I move we accept the language as presented in the black box with a favorable recommendation.
Any comments, questions? No, we have a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, what, is there no down there?
Four to one, yeah.
Thank you, four to one. Clark, yes. Number five. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Article number five, I'll have Aaron Henry come back up. This is a fairly straightforward request. The state owns a piece of property adjacent to Route One and is asking the town to consider rezoning it. And with that, I'll allow Mr. Henry to speak to it.
And I hope in the packet you had a draft map that really, in this case, a picture is worth a thousand words. This is a part of Mass DOT's layout for Route One presently. As you can see, it is surrounded by Armory Street on one side, Center Street, Dayton Street, and Route One southbound on the other. This parcel itself, they've deemed surplus to the right-of-way and are petitioning the town to rezone that into the highway corridor zone, which on the map I included in the packet, clearly you can see that all the property north, south, and west of this parcel are in the highway corridor zone. So it's a sensible landing spot for this parcel should the town determine that they do want to put it in that zone. There will be some procedural issues that Mass Highway will have to do post-town meeting if this is approved at town meeting to actually create this parcel, as it is part of the right-of-way now, but that's an administrative function that they will have to deal with after town meeting if this goes forward as proposed. I'm happy to take any questions on it.
So, Aaron, is there any downside for the town to do this? I mean, what's the benefit?
Well, the benefit would be that in theory, one would, knowing how the state handles disposition of the property, they would, if the town meeting does zone the property highway corridor, Mass DOT will engage with DCAM, which is the state agency that disposes of property for the Commonwealth. They'll issue an RFP to the real estate market and solicit bids for development. So I would assume the benefit for us is that we take a piece of property that is not bringing us in any revenue, and whether that be two months, two years, 20 years, I would anticipate this property coming back on the tax rolls at some point, and I think it's going to happen faster than that. I don't think Mass Highway is doing this just for the good, you know, because it's a good idea. I think they want to generate cash, and the sooner they do that, the better for them, and the sooner this would go back on the tax rolls for us.
So they get the cash and we get the tax?
They got the cash from the sale, we will start bringing in revenue from the development. That said, we have no idea what the development is likely to be at this point. Highway corridor in Danvers ranges everything from the gas station in front of Sopino's, the Cumberland Farms was recently redeveloped, or what is now the Cumberland Farms, which used to be the U.S. Leather Site, that's a highway corridor zone. There's a lot of pre-existing nonconformities in highway corridor as well, so I can't point to everything on that strip as what highway corridor does. But it would seem to be the town many moons ago when it created the highway corridor district, had this parcel been a separate parcel then, I feel very confident that it would have been included in highway corridor at that time if this parcel had been created. So we're comfortable with this as a landing spot.
Good, thank you. Bill?
I just find it interesting the states all of a sudden want to have this changed. This was, I guess, formed about 1949 or so as part of the interchange of Dayton Street and Route One, and two houses that were on this site were torn down to make this, if you will, vacant piece of property. The concern I'd have with any development in this site is the access and egress with the roadway because of the line of sight and amount of traffic, and I can't see what the big advantage of allowing this to be developed. It's been a kind of a, a little bit of wooded area, if you will, for the neighborhood. It's a screening area for other properties. Certainly, I understand there could be some tax revenue for us and some revenue for the state if you do sell it, but I think it's going to be a kind of a congested use with very limited access, egress, or very poor sightlines if it is developed. So I'm not in favor of this.
Thank you, Maureen.
What do you, is it a benefit, do you feel, for us, for the town, for the taxpayers, for Danvers?
For the taxpayers, ultimately, I think this property would, will end up back on the tax rolls in three to five years. I mean, you know, if I had to take it.
But we don't know what development we say.
But I couldn't tell you what they're likely to do.
I'm unclear, so I, do I have to vote?
You can abstain.
This is similar to a citizen's petition. I think owners' petitions under statute have to go forward to town meeting in any case. I think I may have to clarify that with Mr. Barth and counsel, but that's my understanding of how owners' petitions works, but it is a judgment call. I mean, we're, as staff, we're kind of, this is not something that was on our radar screen six weeks ago. This kind of came out of the blue for us as well.
Does it have to be done now? Do we have to?
Owners' petitions are put on the next town meeting that you're having one, and as, we talked about this several weeks ago in front of the board, when, before we knew there was going to be a second town meeting, this one is, at least from a construction standpoint, so straightforward that we advanced it from that November meeting to this one, because really it's, it's just a judgment call on whether you think this property should be developed or not developed, and we don't really, at staff level, have a strong feeling about this one. Again, it wasn't really on our radar screen and haven't had the time to do the due diligence.
I'm in favor, you know, for a benefit for the town.
Go ahead, Maureen.
Thank you. Members have asked the question, is there a favorable, is this favorable to the town anywhere? And I've heard, yes, it's potentially favorable. On the other side, I don't hear anybody saying that keeping it the way it is is favorable to the town. So I'm going to support this and, because I think that it's almost zoning the way it is, it kind of, it gets around its spot zoning, not by intent, but by omission or change that happened around it. So I think that if there's an opportunity and someone has a good project, being highway corridor makes sense at that location. You know, that's the only designation in that sense, so I'll be supporting this.
David?
I support this.
Thank you. What's the will of the board? Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, to me, this parcel that we're talking about, how big is that?
1.85 acres.
So it's almost two acres. That's the big rock pile in between the streets and the highway. That was left over from the development of the highway and the street intersections there, interchange. This was always DOT land, and I'm just wondering why all of a sudden, I tend to believe, you know, what Bill Clark was saying, is that this has been in existence forever. It must be a developer that's looking to put something in there, and that's, you know, two acres is quite a bit of land, but that's all rock. I mean, it's a rock pile up there. So is there any indication of what they're going to do with it?
As I said, the state law around disposition of state property has to follow a pretty strict.
I understand.
Disposition process, so that's all I can tell you.
Okay, I just, I wouldn't support this.
Public hearing for this, I should mention, I apologize, the planning board will be holding a public hearing on this on October 13th, so, and representatives from the Department of Transportation will be present at that hearing, so perhaps that's a question that could be relayed to them that evening. Shameless pluck for another public meeting.
Isn't this a horse before the car, or a cart before the horse? I got it backwards. We haven't even, you know, publicly discussed this, and we're putting it on a warrant, so I'm just surprised.
Members of the board, what you will?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the...
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Lucy?
I'm sorry.
No, no, speak up, audience. Don't be bashful.
Like me? I just wanted one clarifying point. Mr. Henry referred to this as an owner petition that must go forward from this board. Did Mass DOT follow the petition rule regarding gathering of signatures to get a special warrant article on this special town meeting?
Owners' petitions only need the signature of the property owners under 40A, under Mass General Law, 40A, section five. There are citizen petitions that are zoning petitions that require signatures, but owner petitions always have the right straight to town meeting.
Thank you.
Hold on, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, given that this is being presented as an owners' petition, I don't think that we have any, any other option but to forward this, and I will do so with a favorable recommendation.
The motion is to forward it?
With a favorable recommendation.
Is there a second? I'll second it for discussion. Bill, your thoughts?
My thoughts are, I don't know why this is, this parcel's picked out, and you've got two much larger parcels across Route One northbound that probably would be more developable, but they're also part of the interchange. And I don't know why we have to pave or develop every single square inch of this town. It's nice to have some places that are a little more natural. Certainly, the large area between Pope's Lane and what we call now, I guess, Center Street, which is a relocated Center Street, would be a beautiful parcel to develop, but it's also a nice parcel to keep a little bit of greenery there, and I always like to see the water running down the ledge in the spring, oh, the winter, because one of my neighbors used to make ice cream with that ice, he used to bring it home and make the ice cream with it. I just think it's part of a landscape that doesn't necessarily have to be paved and developed, and I will not support this.
Thank you. Maureen?
I'm going to support it.
Okay, David, any comments?
I support it.
Okay, so we have a motion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four to one, thank you. Number six, citizens' petition, let's see if the town will vote to authorize the use and display of the thin blue line flag on fire and other public safety apparatus or take any other action thereon. Is there somebody to speak to this?
Can I speak?
You can go to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Can I, or can I give it to the speaker?
I'm sorry?
Can I speak to her and just go by?
Yeah, just go to the microphone, introduce yourself, either one.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Got to introduce yourself, please.
Okay. My name is Lisa Silva. I'm a Danvers resident. I've lived here for a lot of my life. I grew up here since I was 10, and I recently moved back here five years ago to raise my kids in a community that I really want to be a part of. I'm really disturbed by what's going on in our town right now. A couple Friday nights ago, Diana Ploss and her crew were summoned here by a Blue Line supporter. There was a man assaulted in the square. It was on video. There was a woman, a resident of this town, a well-known resident of this town, walking back and forth in the square during rush hour with two giant flags, making it so people couldn't leave their parking spots in front of local businesses, waving them in front of the cars, making him wait and unable to leave his parking spot. And when finally he was able to, another man followed him behind his car with another flag, a Blue Line flag, Trump flags, both of them together. Later on that night, I pulled up in front of Rocko's. I heard yelling, so I turned my video camera on, and I found the same woman who was walking back and forth chasing a 10-year-old boy. And when I asked her directly what happened, she said right to my face, "I was chasing a 10-year-old boy down the street because he said Trump sucks. This woman is the same age as me. This boy is the same age as my children." A year and a half ago, I called the Danvers Police, I needed help. I had been sexually harassed by a landscaper that I'd hired for months. I thought I could white-knuckle my way through it. The project took a lot longer than I thought, and I finally fired him. I reported the company... I reported the company to the Better Business Bureau. I emailed his boss and the owner of the company, to which she said she didn't believe After I fired them, one day, this particular man decided to park his work truck in front of my house directly across from my driveway. I called the Danvers Police Station and asked them for help.
Lisa?
Yeah.
I appreciate your concerns and your thoughts, but tonight, we're hearing a citizens petition, and we really need to keep the conversation to that.
Okay.
And if you have a point to make about the petition
Okay. Yeah.
We'd like to hear it.
Okay. I'm sorry. This is very close to home to me. I really, I love this town. I grew up here. I have a lot of friends and family that live here. I think this petition is a dog whistle. I think that the Danvers police are very supported in this town. I think they're very well-paid. In fact, I know they're very well-paid because it's public knowledge. And I don't understand why this particular flag that has been used in conjunction with not only political, but Confederate flags as of late in this town, in this North Shore I think that there are other ways that we can support our police officers. And saying that if you don't support this flag, that you do not support police officers, that's just a way to silence people. I think that this is a campaign of fear and deception. I think it ignores accountability. It's tone deaf to the needs of the community in way of social services and crime prevention because police do not prevent crime. They come after it happens. Community services, social services, those prevent crime. And I think that this petition ignores the lives of the 7% of minority people that live in this town and anyone else who supports them. I know that normal sounds great right now. We're in a pandemic. You know, we're all looking for some normalcy. Our kids are remote. Our jobs are hanging in the balance. But this system is the system that gave us what are called bad apples. And I think that blindly supporting this blue line flag after it's been hijacked and used in conjunction with political symbols, not only in the media, but in our own neighborhoods, is enough reason for us to find a better way. Thank you.
The first thing I want to address is, is, I think I've had a pretty thick skin over the past year about what's going on at my home. But I want to let you guys know, you haven't heard me come down here and complain. You haven't heard me come down here and cite every single time that my home has been abused, has been assaulted, I guess, if you want to use that word. But I just made a quick list, and it goes back to September of 2019. There's no doubt to anyone that knows me where I stand politically and who I support politically. I'm open, I'm clear, and I'm, I'm, sorry, David, I'm loud and I'm proud. September 2019 started a series of events at my house because of what I believe. And what I believe is what I am. September 2019, my house was egged for the first time. Called the Danvers Police, they responded, not much could be done about it. October of 2019, explosives were set off in my mailbox. Didn't bother calling the police because they knew that they couldn't do anything about it. Kids were gone. Comes springtime, the snow melts. I find what I can only describe as human excrement on my pool cover. Few weeks later, in the middle of my driveway, not one, maybe a dog got loose and let loose in the middle of driveway? No, 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 no. At least a dozen piles of dog excrement left at the end of my driveway. Finally, this summer, June 2020, house gets egged again. This time, we have cameras in place. The fine damage police had them apprehended within an hour and a half. Four young kids, who I can only describe as having undergone indoctrination through our public schools, felt that it was their obligation, after a Trump flag was flown during a high school graduation, to retaliate against all Trump supporters in town. Not a week later, a 21-year-old and his friend did laps.
Excuse me, Keith. The same as I said to Lisa.
Right, I understand.
We had to talk about the petition.
I understand, I'll get there.
I'm sorry to hear your problems.
This goes on, right?
That's what you said.
Lisa, all comments come before the chair.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
My point, and our point, and the hour point, the group that was organized behind this citizen petition, has never been about you go into your corner and you go into your corner. In fact, the very first rally that we organized was in the front of the town hall, and it happened to be the same night that the Black Lives Matter protests were scheduled. There were no confrontation. There was one, there was one confrontation at the very end, right? There was one confrontation, Mr. Chairman.
This way.
There was one confrontation at the very end that a police officer had to get involved in. When we had the PA system set up, we invited the speaker, a woman from Salem, I believe, who presented herself as being from Danvers at an earlier occasion, to speak. We were not about excluding one group or the other groups. Since then, we've met numerous times, this group, on this petition, and we've made sure it's been our point to say, we are not about dividing the town. We are about uniting the town. So, earlier, you saw the petition about the signs. I was on the phone call when they chose that sign. The only objections I had to it, and it was shared by one of the members of the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee, was that sign should not have the word hate on it. And I made sure that the board, Dutrashe Joko, thought that as a comment from me. David was on the call as well. We are not about trying to divide this town. This is not a zero-sum game. We don't include some groups by excluding other groups. And that's what this has been portrayed as. That's what the media loves, and that's not what we're asking for. So, if I could get back to the petition itself. Of course, I saw Article 2, I believe it was, tonight. And we have, we haven't discussed it as a group because we just saw it yesterday, but I will guarantee you that we are 100% Article 2, behind Article 2. But we don't believe that goes far enough. Words are words, and actions are actions. So, what we would like to see is actions added to those words. We can say things, and we can demonstrate things. Support and respect. That's all we're asking. But I also wanted to talk clerically, unclerically, a little bit more technically, I guess, on the issue. One of the problems, again, I have is the characterization, is this an altered American flag? I raised the issue before, and I'll repeat it again here today. I did not buy a red, white, and blue American flag and alter that flag to create a thin blue line flag. I bought a thin blue line flag. So, I would just, I would just like to prevent people from trying to use that as, again, a call to say, oh, they're modifying the American flag. No, we're not. But the, the next piece was that on the, in the verbiage of the, of the explanation, it says, "The town attorney has offered the following observation with regard to the motion. The context of the Danvers Town Manager Act of 1949 and Mass General Law, any vote by town meeting to authorize the use and display of the thin blue line American flag would be purely advisory in nature." We'll start there. Purely advisory in nature. And that undoubtedly goes back to the Town Manager Act. It goes back to the Town Manager Act, and I'm sure part of that comes from Town Manager Act, Section H. Town manager shall have jurisdiction over the rental and use of all town property. Sure, we know that. It's also, it's important to read on the Town Manager Act and take the, take the law, which is what it is, as a whole, right? Continue on to Section 13L, and says, "Said town manager shall perform such other duties consistent with the office, as may be required by the bylaws or by vote of the town or by vote of said Board of Selectment." Now, I don't mean to go too far afield here, but what this document did was it appointed a town manager to expedite day-to-day operation of the town by temporarily authorizing him to have all the powers enumerated in this document, in this law. But it also, 13L, was the provision that returned that power to the Board of Selectment, sorry, the Select Board and town meeting if the Select Board or town meeting body or citizens through town meeting felt as though it was necessary. And that's exactly what's happening here today. The other piece we have to look at is another not very well-known document in town, but it's the Town Charter. And these two work together. This did not replace this. The Town Charter addresses certain things that the Town Manager Act does not. The Town Manager Act directs, specifically creates a position within the town. All other bodies, the Finance Committee, everything else is created by the Town Charter. It's what created the representative town meeting. In here, that doesn't work anymore. Section 11 is very important. Section 11 is very important because what it says is, "The town of Danvers, after acceptance of this act, shall have the capacity to act through and be bound by its said town meeting members, who shall, when convened from time to time, constitute representative town meetings, and such town meetings shall exercise exclusively, so far as will conform to the provisions of the Act, all powers vested in the municipal corporation." What that says is the town meeting is the boss. The vote of selectmen come next, and the town manager is third. That's what, that's how our government is established. Before any of you were in your current seats, I can say that, because it was 2005, we had an issue. I think you'll all remember, many of you were involved in town meeting or in some other capacity, when we had an article, go to town meeting to buy a new fire truck. It's funny that it's a fire truck. It's always a fire truck. At that meeting, the town manager then, at that point, proposed an article to buy a new fire truck. I forget the exact numbers, but I'm gonna say $250,000. It might have been plus or minus, I don't know. Cost of the fire truck was $250,000. He needed $210,000 to buy the fire truck, and he was gonna trade in the old fire truck for $40,000. Town meeting met, deliberated, modified the article, decided to appropriate the full $250,000, and directed the town manager to keep the old fire truck. Town manager at the time said, when it got time to trade in the fire truck, he went and traded in the fire truck. We said, uh-uh, this is a town meeting vote. Is the town manager bound by that vote or not? Months and months went by, committees were formed, subcommittees were formed, we involved the town moderator, Attorney General advice, all the rest, and guess what? The town meeting vote was binding. The town had to get that fire truck back from trade-in and replace it with cash, and we kept the old fire truck. And what the odd part about it was, within a month, the new fire truck was broken down, and we had to put it back in the service. But that's beside it. But that was an evidence, that was, I guess you would call that, what's the word, David? Precedent, that the town meeting vote is final, and it's meaningful. It's not advisory or suggested. The town meeting holds all the authority of the municipal corporation and should be looked at that way. The next piece I want to move to is the town council refers to use of that flag as a political symbol could open up the town to potential legal action. And then he points to a case, Shirtlift versus the City of Boston. I reviewed it, I'm not an attorney. Beautiful thing about law is, if you're an intelligent person, you can read it and understand it. I read it, I understand it. This case was a case where a group came forward and wanted the City of Boston, who has a flagpole that flies all kinds of flags, including the national flag of Cuba and the flag of Communist China. This flag is, everything flies on this flag, like. A group came forward and says, we want you to fly our flag. And the City of Boston said, no. And it wasn't the Confederate flag, and it wasn't a thin blue line flag, it was the Christian flag, actually. But that's really irrelevant. The city council voted to say no. And this case upheld their right to say no. And as I spoke last time in the community conversation, and last time in the vote of selectmen, we never said that you didn't have the right to say no. You have the right to say no. You have the right to affirm that vote, but you also have to respect the fact that town meeting has the right to say yes. So, this case says that you had the power to do what you did. It doesn't say town meeting doesn't have the power to do what it wants to do. Is that clear? Might not agree, but I hope made it clear. I don't want to go next. And I agree that, because the point I actually wanted to make was, and one of the things we discussed as a group was unity, right? We already said that we wanted, we want to try and bring the town together and support all groups. As a group, we said, wouldn't it be nuts if we could have an outpouring of support? But not just this group, and I'm sure you've read my, our opinion piece that was put together by five of us, it was very difficult, and if you can imagine, the five of us trying to agree on a letter. But we want to go further. We want to go further. We want the town to use that flagpole to support many other groups. Right now, the only other time of the year I think it's record to use this is June for Pride Month. No one's objected to that. I mean, no one's, my group's objected to that. We saw in the email dump that there was an objection made to the fire chief, and nothing was done about it. But I think it's a good thing. I think that person should have been reached out to. And in this case, I think what we lost here was, we lost our opportunity to find out why that person was offended and sit down and invite folks like that person or Ms. Silva to meet with the police, attend the Citizen Police Academy. Do avail yourself to what they really go through and what they're there to do and how well they're trained, right? We don't have a situation like this in Danvers. Sure, we're gonna have citizens that are on the way from time to time, and we've heard everyone say that that's nothing but a Trump rally down there, the thin blue line people. We moved the data We moved the date of our, of our, of our, back to Blue rallies, to Thursdays, because people are coming from out of town with Trump flags. You know, I already said I support them, but I wanted to separate the issues. And some people can't seem to do that. But we wanna see the town create something that goes beyond words and beyond words for just first responders. Let's use, the, the, the month of June is already taken for Pride Month. Let's find a month to fly the Juneteenth flag. Let's fly it in February, Black History Month. I wanna see them fly a thin blue line flag in the month of September, or May, or January, whatever month it is. We have plenty of places to, to show honor and respect for all these groups. And while I wouldn't like to see a Communist China flag flying or a Cuba flag flying, if it came before the Board of Selectmen and they put together a solid enough case that why their flag should go on a flagpole, let's go for it. And if someone objects, we don't just knee-jerk react, within fifteen minutes, an order taken down. We embrace them, we understand what's wrong. What can we do to make you feel more welcome in town? The second, the, the second to last two paragraphs in the joint statement that was issued by the town was so encouraging, the second to, the major paragraph, not the little, was so encouraging. And, and the, 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 the point of those two, the two paragraphs were, we need to find a way to do something that's going to help our first responders feel recognized and make sure we do not offend those that find it offensive. There are plenty of people that would find that pride flag offensive. I don't, but I'm sure there are plenty of people that do. We wanna embrace them and have them come out and say, "What's wrong with it?" Right? And start the dialogue. I don't know who said it first, maybe it's me, I've been repeating this phrase for so long, it might've been Nick. If you ever wanna see real change, you have to stop talking to people that you agree with and start talking to people that you disagree with. I've never been afraid to do that. I've tried to do that my whole life. And that's what I think we need to do. We need to get people, if this person was, was so offended and, and they went, you know, sent to the police station and said, "What's wrong?" You know, here's what we're trying to do, meet with the firefighter and say, "This is why I put it up." We'll never know who was in that guy's heart, but we're assuming he was a racist. We're assuming he was some sort of a neo-Nazi or a skinhead. There's no place for that. I mean, David, your comments at the, at the community conversation...
Keith, to the chair, please.
Sorry, sorry. At the community conversation, I heard comments from one of the board members, that the people that fly that flag wanna see him dead. I don't wanna see him dead. It was, it was, it's just, to lay all of that on us, when in this town, we do not have a history of racial bigotry, uh, in, in our police department. We do not have the issues that are going around the rest of the country. We can act as a model for the cities and the state and the country. Find my notes again, hang on one second. Well, I'll show you the, I think you want to, but I won't. I think it was one more important point. Oh, that, that's the other point I wanted to make, too. This flag is not only being flown, or was only flown in Davis. So back to the point about this being a political symbol, one of the board members made an allegation that it's an ethics violation to use public property to fly political symbols. This flag is being flown in numerous other cities and towns around this state, including a state prison is, is flying this flag, right? If this was to be challenged by the Attorney General's Office, let's, let's do that and let them tell us that, no, you can't. Because the, 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 the pecking order here does, okay, just describe, town meeting, town Board of Selectmen, town manager, town council, if we run this all the way up the flagpole, pun, and we find that the Attorney General's Office decides to tell us, no, let them do that. Let them do that. But let's act as a town with the town meeting body the way town meeting body wants to act and not try to dilute this by, by, by warning them that, guess what? You, you're gonna, you're doing something illegal. I think they should be able to do something that they wanna do, that they feel is right to do, and if it's the wrong thing to do by, by state law, the Attorney General will tell us that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see if there's anybody else that wants to speak.
Miss...
Don't repeat anything, you can't help it. Try not to repeat what we just heard.
I am short and sweet.
Thank you.
The Select Board here is considering supporting or not supporting this particular article that was a citizen's petition, basically. It's an article that should stand on its own. The legal opinion was made by a attorney that works for the town. We, as town meeting members and primarily as residents, have placed this petition before this town meeting, because that's where it's gonna go ultimately, whether it gets your support or not. But I think this body needs to support this because when it happened, and, and my, my version of what happened is maybe a little different. It's unfortunate the way it happened, because it was declared a political symbol, for one thing, which we and may, ninety percent of the residents don't think it's a political symbol. The firemen and the policemen don't think. Gardner, we are never gonna agree, you know that.
Mark, to the chair, please.
Yes, sir. The one thing that we need to remember is, this is a political decision that was made by our town manager, which really doesn't belong in his wheelhouse. This is something that reflects on the town as a whole through us town meeting members and through you as the Board of Selectmen. Now, there's been many different versions of why it happened, how it happened, doesn't matter anymore. What we need to do is, we need to determine whether the town is going to return respect to the first responders, basically. That's, that's where we're going. The thing is, it's, it's a lousy piece of cloth, but it's a symbol. And the symbol is not being, uh, honored maybe as, as it should be. The firemen, the policemen, the first responders have done a tremendous job for this town. Our police department is trained and it is accredited through a, you know, accreditation program that we have developed fifteen years ago. They all go through that. We, as residents, participate in the accreditation program, because we are being asked questions every time they come, come on board every five years. So I think we're mixing apples and oranges. I think the decision here is, do we, as the political body, and that means town meeting and the Board of Selectmen, want to restore the flag to its position that it was intended by the firemen and the policemen? But maybe there's an alternative. Maybe we can make an example of this as a way of showing other communities, because other communities have gone through the same thing. Maybe we can come to some kind of a compromise. The compromise may be different to you, Mr. Chairman, different to me, but we need to talk. We need to discuss it. And that's why this issue was brought to the town meeting, because everybody is going into their own corners and they don't want to face each other and address the issue. If there is an issue, let's resolve it. We've always been able to do that. Sometimes we don't agree with each other, but that's how it is. Democracy is in action. We should be able to consider this warrant article at town meeting, whether it goes up or down, that's up to the town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We've heard from Keith, from Mark about the petition, unless you have something absolutely new to offer.
Are you?
You've already spoken, and nobody's getting a second shot at the apple. To the microphone.
Well, I, I... There I am. My name is Jim Oros, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. Just to be clear, I don't even know if we even read the article, so I'm gonna just read it. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the use and display of the thin blue flag on the fire..."
Jim, I read that to begin the discussion.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, because I, I didn't remember. And, and again, you know, this, you know, I, I came up to speak because apparently I, I am relatively ignorant of all these political assignments to all these symbols we have, okay? And, uh, we, you know, the town manager made a decision that he had it, that he could, by law, make. But the question is, uh, you know, these symbols, this is just gonna be, you know, it's happening all across the country. You know, this is the cancel culture, this is step one. So what's gonna be the next symbol? What's gonna be the next action we have to take?
Jim, that has nothing to do with this petition.
Oh, it doesn't.
It doesn't. Please.
And, as was, the, the Board of Selectmen had mentioned at one time, was there a ceremony to put this flag on the truck? So, you know, somehow there must be a process in which we can, as we've mentioned before, have the flag, or any flag, you know, put up for some event or commemoration. That's all.
Thank you. In the back, I think it's Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Powers, Precinct Six, Town Meeting Member. I rise in opposition to the citizen's petition, not in the terms of being opposed to respect for first responders. But this is simply, to me, the use of public property. The use of public property for something that was not intended. A fire engine is a first responding piece of equipment. Everything on it is designed to be effective and fast and life-saving and allowing our trained professionals to move as quickly as possible to help the citizens or those that are requiring assistance. To me, the flag has no place on this or any other fire engine or emergency vehicle. Now, I've heard some great words from Mr. Lucy, Mr. Zuberek, about the need to bring people together, to discuss the different symbologies for different groups in this community, across the state and across the country. I wholeheartedly agree with those sentiments. This warrant does none of that. This warrant says there is a particular instance with a specific flag that everybody now agrees is political, okay? It had its genesis in the respect, paying respect for an officer who was killed on the South Shore. It has evolved to something else, the process has evolved, as I understand it, via communities around the Commonwealth, flying one blue line flag that is going to be ultimately returned to the family of the deceased officer. They are flying it for a short period out of respect and a display of respect for that individual. I haven't heard that discussion in Davis, I hope it's around, but I haven't heard it yet. Back to the comments made, in terms of unity, a discussion involving all of the different parties is certainly appropriate, but not in the context of a yes or no discussion on a blue line flag on a fire engine. The wrong approach. When Mr. Lucy at your forum expressed those same words, I was actually very excited and I meant to reach out and talk to Keith and say, "I'll help you with that, we can do this." He and I have history, as you know, both supportive and against each other's positions. We work well together, and I'd be perfectly willing to do that, but not this way. Not taking one symbol, put on a emergency vehicle by one individual after an extended period, leading to a rally. Now, I'm glad the citizens got along at the rally, but there were some comments by town officials and union officials that I have serious problems with. Calling out members of this board by gender, and then the newest member by her gender in a supportive effort as versus a non-supportive effort, calling out the town manager, an employee of the town who we support and pay and he chooses to work for this town at a public forum, offering a speech like that? I'm, I'm sorry, that's wrong. But we can fix it. You can help us fix it. You can help us fix it by authorizing a group to get together, bring the disparate groups into discussion, just as Mr. Lucy was talking about. You can also do it by not forcing this decision down the throats of those citizens who, by the way, are also taxpayers, who also help fund and pay for that fire engine and pay for the salaries of the firefighters and pay for the salaries of all our first responders. They have an equal spot at the table. The fact that they don't feel that way requires us to revisit this and not support this warrant. I'll have much more to say down the road in terms of different aspects of the warrant that I agree with, but tonight, for tonight, I just, I would like some, express support for ninety percent of what Keith said. And I think we can get that, get there with an appropriate action from this board or the town manager, or if we even do it on the town meeting floor and reauthorize the town manager to initiate a committee, a review, a discussion. But please, do not support, do not mandate, and do not get us into the legal quagmire of having to legally challenge the authority of the town manager over this issue. This is a well-run town with excellent services for all of our citizens. We don't need this fight right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the Board of Selectmen, Bill. Something different?
I also just wanna make a quick comment that I also would, I know this is gonna go forward to town meeting, oh, sorry, Nova Samad, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. So this is gonna go forward to town meeting, no matter what you guys approve or disapprove. I would also like to request that you not show support for this. Just quick, two quick reasons. It was brought up that, like, we need to show an actual act to support, and I think we do. We do pay our first responders well, and we do support, we have never not supported. So saying that we need to bring, bring back respect for them is really offensive, that, like, I'm sorry, what have we done so far that is offensive to our first responders? And secondly, whether people like it or not, that flag has become political. You can say it's not, you can say it's not, the origination is not political, but it is now. So I don't know what to tell you. Go demonstrate against the people that are using it, against what you think it stands for, but it is a political flag at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. So my comment at the moment, before we go on, is I appreciate, um, some of what Keith said, and I appreciate Mike's thought of getting together a group at some point in time to discuss these issues. My sense is it'll probably be after town meeting, there's not time to do that at this moment. There's not time to do that at this moment. So that's something we can look forward to in the future. David, comments?
Yes, thank you. Does this work?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I ask the board to forward this with an unfavorable recommendation to the Finance Committee. I am informed, and apparently, I don't need any further evidence, that the proponents of this article are essentially the same organizers of the Trump rally that was unlawfully conducted on the front lawn of the town hall directly across from my home two weeks ago. I've recently been informed that a couple of thugs from that group were approaching my home and turned back by the good Danvers police. I'm grateful for that. I speak as a 78-year-old resident who has lived in that house for 50 years. I live alone as a single gay man with no husband, no wife, no children. The children of Danvers have essentially been and remain the children that I have always cared for. As an aging man and as a gay man, I am in a statistical minority, as are my Danvers neighbors who are older, black, Muslim, Asian, Jewish, or other minorities. I am also in the older demographic group in Danvers who fear the end of our uselessness, noting that many of people in our government, not locally but nationally, consider us as disposable. The radical group who assembled with the Trump campaign, who invaded the town lawn, town hall lawn, frighten us. One Danvers resident in tears asked if she should remove a Biden-Harris bumper sticker from her car for fear that she will be stopped by the Danvers police. Unfortunately, the Danvers police, including many superb officers who constantly fight for fairness, openness, and welcome, are now connected with the Trump campaign and the radical terrorist organizations that are associated with that campaign. It is a disservice to the good Danvers police officers who have consistently attempted to build a bridge of trust between our Danvers police and our townspeople, including those of minority status like me. We are growing fearful of a police department that engages in the lawless political activity on the town hall lawn. This warrant article continues to erode the bridge of trust that we have worked for continuously for at least the last 10 deliberate years. I suspect that several elected and appointed officials will be sanctioned and penalized by appropriate state authorities for the illegal political rally activity that has frightened many of us, causing division and confusion and grossly demeaning the good police officers who suffer this undeserved erosion of trust. I will not vote to send this warrant article along without having made this statement, and I request my individual, separate board fellow members to join me in condemning the warrant article and the behavior of those who, in themselves, an angry minority, malign us and the good police. And in conclusion, I should also comment on the probable impotence of any town meeting vote on the article. As many are aware and are sick of listening to it, I've been a lawyer for 52 years, a state court judge for 11 years, a member of the State Ethics Commission for five years, and have served for my entire professional life on various legal and educational groups. I live and believe in the rule of law. Those who conducted a political rally on public property violated that rule, and it makes me sick. And no town bylaw can contradict state law, which prohibits political activity on public property. You who took part in that violated the law. Those who continue to maintain that the flag is not a political statement, despite thousands of pages and thousands of photographs from, throughout the country, that show that flag displayed regularly with the Confederate flag and political banners constantly displayed at political rallies, and by the way, if you don't like it, take your complaint to a court. That's what courts are for, not for causing division among the good people in my town where I hope to die in a safe and holy place. I'll be 78 Friday. My good father died at 77, so in some ways, I'm on borrowed time. Please respect the rule of law. Take your fights to the courts where they belong. Without the rule of law, our democracy will fail. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, David. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did not prepare a statement as David did. I respect dramatically what he said. I'm in a kind of a unique position because I served with Keith and Mike on the Board of Selectmen for six years, and I respected both of the individuals for their integrity and their knowledge. However, I think this issue has gone far beyond where it should go, and it's out of control. I resent the fact that I was, say verbally challenged, email challenged, saying that I didn't support the public safety officials in this town. I resent that comment because for 53 years, I have volunteered for this town and served this town as a town meeting member and a selectman. I was part of the people who orchestrated the fact that we bought a fire truck that was not recommended by the town manager or the fire chief, but was recommended by the firefighters for their need, and I was very, very vocal in helping those people who wanted to support that 25 years ago. In fact, I felt great pride when the lieutenant who was assigned to that truck drove it to my farm, parked it in the parking lot, and let me look at it when we first had it. That was the first 100-foot quint truck that we had. I was part of the Police Station Site Committee 40-odd years ago with some very distinguished members of the community, including Dick Spalding, Ellie Morse, and others, and John George. I feel that those people have been irresponsible in their written and stated, publicly stated words about our feelings towards public safety. I have always respected our public safety people and take great pride in the fact that the chief is a former student of mine, that the acting chief was a former student of mine, that one of the former police, fire chiefs is a student of mine, and about a third of the department, of the police department are former students of mine, all whom were excellent young men, and have shown and given the town great service during their careers. I think that I'm gonna be, I'll push this to the town meeting, definitely. However, I'm not gonna favorably recommend it, but it's where it should be discussed. It's where it should, this decision should be made. And I think that we will, as David said, let the courts decide finally at the end what, where this is gonna go. Because the Town Manager Act, which Keith alluded to, does give our town manager tremendous power. Some people have expressed to me the fact they feel he's a dictator, that this was a dictatorial type thing, dictatorial type thing. No, it was an administrative type thing. It was a decision made that is consistent with what we've done in the past. I don't know of anywhere else that we have political statements made publicly. I know that I was reminded very carefully when I was a teacher that we had to be careful what we wore in certain instances, what we said in certain instances, to try to give a balanced outlook. It's very difficult not to be emotional about this because people who I felt were my friends have definitely become otherwise. My respect for educated, quotation marks, people in this community has changed dramatically, not just over issues like this, but similar issues. We've got to start in a ground root, ground floor route here in Danvers to try to solve a problem that's been created in our national and state levels that is tremendously negative. I've never seen in my life people polarized the way they are today. I'm sorry, Keith, your house has been attacked. Mine has too. My business has. People have threatened me for what I said, but I'm not gonna give up, and I'm gonna stand for what I think is right for the community, the good of the community. I had a very excellent conversation with Mr. Zubrick yesterday. We sat down and discussed some things. I'm sorry that I was pressed for time with a doctor's appointment, but we have always had an opportunity to talk together. We may differ. We express our feelings, and we go on. I like Mike's idea about having a group of people get together to include all factions of the community to discuss this and see if we can rectify and solve a problem. I think it can be solved. If we have a super committee put together, those representing all aspects of the community, I think we can bring ourselves back together again. I would like nothing better than to see a unity kind of meeting and process and event occur that pulls us back together as a community because we are deserving of it. Our police and fire departments are deserving of it, and I have never, ever expressed the feeling that we have had a problem with our police department. The events, the facts have shown that to be true, and I think part of it is the fact that we took the initiative to get a accredited police department, number one in the state. So all of our men and women in the police department were well-trained and are well-trained, just as our firefighters are well-trained, where they go to the fire academy before they serve the town. Some towns don't do that, and some of the movement nationally and even statewide is to try to get these smaller communities or communities that don't have professionally trained people in this public service to get them to have a higher standard. I don't want to go on because what I say is only from one old man to another. If I talk to David, I've only been here 75 years. He's been here longer than I have. I've served longer than anyone in this town, I think, in public, public service at this present time. I'm nowhere near what Frank Terrell did. However, I think it's time for us to get together, to be amenable about this situation and not be influenced by professional, professional people who are out there going all over the state and showing their political standards, which may not be ours. I have noticed that at the town meeting, I, I'm sorry, the town hall, two weeks ago, I noticed the same truck. Some of the same people who I saw in Swanswick two weeks before that on a Sunday morning, demonstrating on the lawn of the congregational church in front of Governor Baker's house. Someone said they saw the same Winnebago up in Seabrook, New Hampshire afterwards. Some of these people are just going around all over this part of the country and demonstrating. They're professional demonstrators, and I think that's gonna stop. We've got to take care of ourselves in this town. God bless America and God bless Danvers.
Thank you, Bill. Maureen?
Well, Bill, you said a lot that I was gonna say. I didn't have a statement prepared, but we do live in the best town, okay? What I liked hearing tonight was from everybody, from Keith, what he had to say, to Mark, to Lisa, you know, everybody. We have the best employees. We have, I think we have great town management here. I like the fact of everybody gathering and talking things out, like I said before, at our special meeting. I think communication is the key. You know, I'd like to, you know, if we have subcommittees or committees, let's all sit down. Mike, you know, you had some great points too. Keith, you know, Lisa, everybody gather like we have the other committees with the subcommittees. Let's all sit down. Let's talk it out. Let's work this out. Communication is key. Look what it's come to, okay? Look what we've done. When I said, you know, we've brought this on our doorstep. Town manager, whatever he decides, he is the town manager. We still need to respect him, okay? Do we have to all agree? No. We don't all want to agree, okay? We want people to not agree, but we want to hear from the citizens. We want people to feel safe. We want to support our first responders and our police. We have the best, the accreditations, the training, everything they've done for us. They're the first ones that we pick up in a tragedy when there's something happening. We're not saying that they're not doing a good job. Let's see if we can all work this out, and I would like to see this go to town meeting, but I'd still like to have a lot more discussion, and that's how I'm going to leave it. But I think communication, please. Lisa, you know, I'm sorry, I apologize, everybody's names. I was trying to write them down, but the article that came out that the chairman wrote, the fire chief, the police chief, and the town manager was excellent. The article for the restore respect for our first responders, excellent too. Let's blend them. Let's work together. Let's get everybody to work together. Let's feel comfortable and safe. This is our town. Let's support everybody. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. God, no?
Thank you. I'd like to ask a question about the actual language and if someone representing the group...
Ask the question through the chair, please.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. As I read the, as I read the thin, the text, "to see if the town will vote to authorize the use and display of the thin blue line flag on fire and other public safety apparatus", I have to ask, what is the thin blue line flag we're talking about? Because if you go on Google or search, you can see any number of representations calling themselves a thin blue line. This appears to be the most common and consistent thin blue line, a black-blue-black picture. This is a picture of what is actually a decal on the fire trucks and police department vehicles since 2018, and is not in question here. If you also look, you can find the American flag, the actual American flag, modified. You can find skulls with a thin blue line flag. Mike, I'm asking for clarity that this is the representation that the petitioner is meant to indicate when they asked thin blue line flag, because there is confusion out there, primarily confusion between the, this symbol and this symbol in people's minds. So I want to make sure that the voters, the town manager, the town meeting members of which I am one, are clear that this is the actual symbol that is being requested to be put back on the trucks, and I would ask for clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, is this the flag we question or refer to?
Mr. Chairman, when we, we first met as a group, actually probably when it was a smaller group, maybe just three of us, we wanted to make sure that we, that we were, I don't want to say intentionally vague, but we were, and I just had a quick discussion with Mr. Powers. Yes, we are, the article is referring to that flag, but there were six very important words at the end, I think there's six, or take any other, any other action... words at the end, I think there's six, or take any other, any other action thereon.
Thank you.
If at town meeting, we can decide that a different course of action, a different action that satisfies the article, we're in favor then. We're in favor of the initial one that's words only, and we're just trying to go further, right? That's what we're trying to do. No one, you know, I know this board has heard that, oh, you don't hate, you hate first responders. What we've been trying to get across is they're quickly becoming their own marginalized group, and we don't want to see that with any group. We really don't. So if people want to paint us as these evil folks from out of state, we're not. We've never said exclude this one, kick that one out, take that down, put this up.
Keith, you answered the question. Thank you.
But that's what I'm trying to make is, like all of you have said, it's, you know, and I'm in favor of what I heard from Bill, from Maureen, so far from Gardner, and I haven't heard from you. David, I've had three times today to have a cup of coffee with you, man.
Okay.
I'm not a bad guy. You know that, so. But anyways, yes, the original intent is that flag.
Thank you.
But that was again to open the door, to get the conversation started.
Gardner, anything else?
Yeah, I do. I have several, several points to make. So the petition as presented is a warrant article. It is a law, it is going to be affirmed as an article of law. It has to be legally binding, and that's why we engage our town council. My question is, if that is the symbol that is being represented when you say thin blue line, when is being, is thin blue line flag in quotes here, I have heard that many people who signed the petition were unclear on that. They felt it was this symbol. And so I wonder if the, if the people who passed that petition were exacting in their description of what they were talking about. That's, you know, I don't know if you're going to ask...
And I don't think we can assume what somebody thought or didn't think. They signed it on their own...
Right, but however, if I'm signing something and I'm thinking we're talking about this symbol, that is different than me signing it and thinking it's that symbol. None, here, we can take that sidebar. I've heard tonight the statements many times, we're not far apart, we want unity, there's room for all. However, I have to suggest that that's disingenuous when groups are formed and at the last meeting when this was presented, was clearly stated, come join our group unless you disagree with us, unless you have shown that you aren't going to support the police. That's not unity, that's not an open forum, that's not an open discussion. That is, come on and talk to us as long as you agree. So, so no, I've got the floor now, okay? So I'm hearing over and over, we want unity, we want to come together. We had alternate groups at that rally. They didn't go there to normalize the position of the blue line flag. They went there as a counterpoint to that narrative. They went there as a counterpoint that this was not political, that this has had no other meaning other than only pride and support for people. They aren't, this is not a discussion about what I feel or what Mr. Lucy feels or what Mr. Hagan feels. Everybody's entitled to their own interpretation of this symbol. I'm not trying to change anybody's mind about what that symbol means. But what I am saying is, you can't say that yours is the absolute and only representation of that symbol. And as such, you can't expect it to be put on public property. Fly it on your boat, fly it on your car, put it in your house, put it in your yacht, great for you, any symbol you want. But this is an issue of what goes on public property that taxpayers pay for. Hold that belief firmly in your heart that this is purely about police support, great. But others, demonstrably large numbers of others, have said it has a different connotation to me. Some say it's American flag, that's debatable, it's not, it's not provable or factual, it is a feeling. Some say it represents something to people of color and their supporters. To them, that is what they feel. You cannot put something on public property where you have such divisiveness. And making this a litmus test, this one design litmus test, is unfair. You know, the other question is, the fire chief has come out himself in public statements, and I don't want to point him out, other than to say, he says he now sees why this is considered political. He doesn't say he gives up his feeling about this flag as a flag of support. He does say he now sees why others may feel this is political, and he would be naive not to see that there are other viewpoints. And he has said he sees no place for a political symbol on a fire truck. So I can't believe that, you know, you would go forward with this when the fire chief understands that there are alternate views, respects that other people may see this differently than he does in the fire department and the police department, and says he agrees with the town manager's position and the town's stated position, no political symbols on town property. There was an argument tonight made about, did the town manager have the authority to do so? He does. Some people, you have even within that group, different people saying he does or doesn't. Mr. Lucy referred to a section of the Town Manager Act and said, other duties. That is the catch-all when something is not definitively described in the Town Manager Act. It's similar to when you get a job and they say, your job title is this, your duties are these things, and they always have the tagline, and other duties as described. The section Mr. Lucy's talking about is when it's not definitively and explicitly stated, then there is some latitude, and here's how we handle the latitude when we didn't say things we couldn't have comprehended in 1949. So if there's an issue about cell towers, or there's an issue about Wi-Fi, 5G, whatever, it's not in the 1949 Town Manager Act. There is a catch-all for what happens when things are not explicit. There was a discussion tonight about, well, why take it down? Why do this? Why not, you know, have the attorney general decide, so on and so forth. I have a question for the, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town manager. Mr. Town Manager, is it accurate that this symbol has been approved and is on public service vehicles since 2018? That it is explicitly approved?
It's been in the fire trucks since 2018, and the fire department recently asked if they could continue to fly it, and I said yes.
Okay, so it's been explicitly approved. Mr. Town Manager, do we have other flags aside from the American flag and the state flag that have been approved to be flown at town properties such as the POW flag, flags suspicious of social causes like the LGBT flag? And is it true that also we allow the flying of armed service flags on the back of the fire truck?
The tradition of flying the armed services flags on the fire trucks has been around for some time, based on the service of the members within the department. They have rotated the armed service flags. The prior administration had no issue with that. I certainly have no issue with that, but, and you've named the other flags that are flown on town property.
Okay. And that the flag symbol that Mr., the chairman has in front of him was not requested and not approved. Is that accurate?
Correct.
So this is a lot of swirl around what essentially is a personnel issue. A firefighter, for reasons that we don't know, you're right, we don't know, and I don't ascribe racist activities behind his actions. I don't ascribe any, you know, reasoning behind his actions. Those are his own, and he has, and I wouldn't want to know who it is, and I don't want to know the reasons they went up. A employee broke town rules, two actually, one by putting something up that was not approved, one by putting up something that was political. He was asked by town management, his bosses, to remove it. It should have remained a private personnel issue, but it was fought and publicized and politicized. And that's the part that's wrong. If that person, if you want to follow this through, the same arguments that are being led by, you know, the proponents of this article, take that flag design and ask for permission. And as Mr. Lucy pointed out, if the selectmen and the town manager say no with reason, that's defensible in court. This was an employee action. That employee shouldn't have done it, he was asked to correct it, and instead of doing so, it was made public and political. So I also want to make a statement that I feel for the stories of Lisa and the stories of Keith. None of us should be the recipient of reaction, but I'll tell you right now, it happens. We know it's happened to the town manager, and I happen to have an ongoing, I happen to have an ongoing police investigation because a business owner in this town has made out and out lies about something I never said. That was picked up by someone else, and they are threatening me on my daughter's wedding and wedding pictures on Facebook, including the picture of assault rifles. This is way out of hand. The litmus test on my support of the police and fire department is not a flag design. So I do not support this article to return that design to a fire truck that the fire department doesn't even want on it. Well, let me rephrase that, that the fire chief says has no place on the truck. I can't speak for the fire department. So I don't see that there's any favorable movement forward. I do agree that we should have further community conversation and bring people together about a solution that is unrelated to that design. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to move the question.
Thank you. Motion to move the question.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move we forward the citizen's petition with an unfavorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, unfavorable recommendation. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Unfavorable means that we...
We don't, we don't agree with it, but it's going forward.
It's going forward.
Yes, unfavorable, so it's five zip. Okay, thank you. Article seven, keeping of animals, to see if the town will amend the zoning bylaw to revise how it regulates the keeping of animals, including the potential insertion and deletion of terms, uses, and dimensional requirements up to and including the complete prohibition of the activity or take any other action thereon, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this one ought to sound familiar because we were discussing it back in February of 2020 before the world was turned sideways. We had been preparing to bring this forward to the annual town meeting. I think you all know the background on this, but for those who may be listening, this question was brought forth. We have a resident who owns goats in an R1 district. That is against the zoning bylaw. That made its way into the courts. The courts decided favorably with the town's position that it was against the bylaw. And during the appeal, both attorneys made a request to the courts that the proceedings be paused so that the town meeting could weigh in on this because there's the potential that the town meeting vote ultimately will resolve the issue one way or the other. So what you have tonight is a language that is the same as what you saw back in February. There are two things happening here. There is a change in the zoning bylaw that would allow the keeping of animals in any residential zone. Currently, it's limited to Zone Residential Two, which is our, in theory, our middle-sized residential lots, although when you look at the actual size of lots in Danvers, you have R1 lots that are 150,000 square feet, and you have R3 lots that are less than a quarter of an acre. So when you look at the average lot size, R2 is generally the middle-sized residential lots, R3 are the largest, R1 are the smallest. So the zoning bylaw currently limits the keeping of animals to R2, which is our middle-sized lots. The language here would, would make it permissible in any of the three residential zones so long as a permit was issued favorably by the Board of Health. And so the, what accompanies the zoning recommendations is a fairly extensive regulation that was reviewed earlier this year by the Board of Health. They adopted it, which does not make it binding. The Board of Health regs only become binding once they are published. So the Board of Health adopted these regs and then wanted to wait for town meeting to have an opportunity to review the language. Because of the time that had passed from February until now, the Board of Health did recently have another public hearing on their regulation on October 1st, so just recently, and they reaffirmed the language from February. So we have Mr. Henry here. His umbrella department oversees both health and land use, so both, most of the staff that have been working directly on this work for him. And I think with that, either of us would be happy to entertain any questions that the board has about what's being moved forward for consideration by town meeting.
Very good, thank you. Questions, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate and commend Mr. Henry and their department. Again, they're basically rectifying some mistakes that were made 20 years ago by our zoning department when we transferred our zoning laws from a narrative to a graph. One of those examples was that R3 was prohibited from having animals, when in fact, R3 was one of the primary areas where most of the animals that we had in town were residing, horses, cows, chickens, and all kinds of animals were in a lot of the residential lots at that time. R3, the people that had those animals had no problem with it when it was changed, or they didn't, they didn't lose their right. However, once they lost their animal, it was no longer needed, no longer allowed in R3, which is an absurdity. R1, there was reasons why they didn't allow animals in R1. This whole issue came to light about 20 years ago because an irresponsible animal owner had a large cavity of rabbits in his backyard on North Shetland Avenue, right up on his neighbor's border property line. There was a stink, there was a smell. He wasn't taking care of them properly, and the resulting actions ultimately ended up with a town meeting vote not to allow animals anywhere except for R2, which I fought for because I was in R2, although I'm a farm and I'm exempt from this. It's very important today, I think, with our activities of people, that we allow people to have animals anywhere in town as long as they're responsible. And this particular article has addressed that with setbacks, having plans for cleaning, having plans for feeding, having plans for maintaining the animals properly. And I think there's no reason why someone shouldn't be allowed to have a half dozen chickens or a beehive or a small animal that may not be a pet quotation marks, although I can't understand why pot-bellied pigs are allowed and others aren't because they're almost a, well, whatever. So I'm very much in favor of this. The graph that we have on page five rectifies much of the problem that we had in town because the Board of Health can now permit it in any residential area in town and that the person has a responsible plan for their animal, there's no reason why they shouldn't have to have it. This was brought to us by a resident who was, the town manager alluded, had pigs, I'm sorry, goats, goats on their property. The previous owner of that property was driven out of town because she had three chickens and the same neighbor complained about them 20-odd years ago. There's no need for that. You can live with your neighbors. I have 42 chickens right next to one of my neighbors. They love them. They don't smell them, there's no sound to them coming out of them, it's obnoxious, there's no roosters. They've made provisions in this bylaw to take care of those situations. So the short of it is, I'm glad they finally have rectified problems that were made, created by our planning department 20-odd years ago. Hopefully, this will be passed at town meeting. I'm amazed that it wasn't passed, what, five years ago when we discussed something like this and for some reason, people got up in arms about it. So I'm very much in favor of this and love to see young kids especially have their little half dozen chickens in their backyard and go out and get their fresh eggs. It's a great experience, and I hope that we can pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen?
Mr. Chairman, on Article Six, I said, I thought I said unfavorable. I'm in favor of this warrant article. Can I correct that?
So, in Article Six, the motion was to pass it through with an unfavorable recommendation.
So no recommendations. Right now, we're going to discuss it?
No, Article Six, we've already voted on it.
Right. But I, unfavorable, I want this to go to FinCon, we said.
It's going, it is going.
Okay. And I'm in favor of Article Six to be discussed at our next meeting?
No.
No? On, on town meeting?
Town meeting.
Yes, that's what, okay. I just want to be clarified with that.
Okay. So, or Article Seven is what we're discussing now.
Okay, so on Article, so I just want to be clear that I am in favor of the article number six.
She could ask for a motion for reconsideration.
Can I have a motion to reconsider? Yeah.
After we do seven.
Okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't...
That's okay.
All right. So Article Seven, keeping the animals...
You have goats or no goats?
Yep. I'm in favor of it too, with the goats.
Okay, thank you. Gardner?
Though I don't have the same years of...
Though I don't have the same years of experience as Bill, I do have some, a bit of agricultural background. I see this as also rectifying a situation, unintended consequence, as it were. I've had, you know, goats, pigs, chickens, cows, calves as pets and as, you know, livestock on a farm. And I'm particularly happy with the fact that this is explicit that there are no roosters allowed, because that's always a question we get when we have roosters in, you know, here. So I'm very happy that it explicitly prohibits roosters by directly naming that. So I'm very much in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
I'm in favor as well, but I wondered, and I asked before, can a chicken lay an egg without a rooster with the head out?
Sure. It's just unfertilized. It's, it's an egg.
Anyone in the audience? Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Duggan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I rise in opposition to this article, Article Seven, and specifically for R1 zone, which is comprised of Precincts One, Most of Two, and part of Precinct Three. These R1 properties are all very small lots typically, maybe six or seven thousand square feet. Having animals on these lots has, will have the potential to have a detrimental impact on the quality of life for people, especially in the warmer months where animals that are kept outside draw rodents, insects, they create noise, there's also associated odor, odors. I, I just, through you, Mr. Chairman, for some clarification, because I'm looking in the appendix, in the definitions of, of the animals, seems to be pretty much any domesticated animal. I've heard the board mention beehives, rabbits, even goats. But what is the permissible, animals that are going to be allowed under this article?
It's...
And I'm, and for example, like horses, cows? Can you give some examples of some of the larger animals that would be allowed?
Did you read the appendix?
The reason I mention that is, is if you talk about chickens or rabbits, it seems very benign, right? Very low impact, but...
So, Matt, what I'll do is I'll ask Mr. Henry to describe household pets. Because it kind of spells it out here on page four.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm working off of my own printed out version, so I hope I'm, I'm on the same, looking at the same document. But the, this article does add a definition of household pet that we don't have now. And that was something that came up in the current enforcement action, as there was an argument made that the keeping of these animals were actually household pets. So we felt that this article needed to define that. And while we wanted to authorize more permissive rules around the keeping of animals, we felt it was a stretch to call an animal that you need to keep in a pen a household pet as you don't keep it in your home at night. So again, and I, Mr. Clark pulled out the example of a pot-bellied pig as we looked across, not just Massachusetts, but I mean nationally, kind of what's happening with agriculture and urban ag, as they, as the buzzword calls it. There's a small species of, of pot-bellied pig that people are keeping in their homes and they're potty-trained and, and so we felt that, and we do know that there are some families in town with that species at home. So we felt that that should be included. But really, it's the animals listed here, I mean, it says not limited to, but we tried to make this as specific as possible as to what we would consider a household pet. To Mr. Duggan's point about what kind of large animals could there be, again, we're trying to be fairly permissive and open-ended because we're really relying on the applicants to the Board of Health to, to document that the pest management associated with keeping a large horse or a large bovine can be done, that, that the food stock for that animal is going to be well-managed and well-protected, that the waste management associated with that large animal is appropriate, and where is that pen going to be is managed appropriately. So again, we tried to take an expansive view. So it's, I can't give you an example of what's in and what's out. It will really depend on when somebody comes forward with an application and that application will be reviewed on its merits. And hopefully, in a year or two, we'll be able to give you some more concrete examples. But typically in town, it's horses, a few cows. Mr. Carleo was on vacation today, so I was unable to get a copy of what we call the barn book, but we have a copy right now of permitted animals, you know, that are inspected annually through the Board of Health. And it's pretty run-of-the-mill. I mean, I suppose you could get an alpaca or a llama, but I don't believe we have any of those in town at the moment. It's, it's generally horses. On occasion, I think there's a few cows.
Now, just so you, you understand the way this is written, you could make an amendment on Town Meeting Floor to pull out R1 or R3 and limit it to the others.
Well, I think R1 specifically, based on, I think everyone knows R1 is a very tightly knit, are tightly knit neighborhoods where, you know, this will have a detrimental impact, I think, in, after it's executed, actually, this, when this goes into force. So when we talk about large animals, I mean, it's open-ended. You basically could have anything. And people, you know, people call their, their, you know, their cow a pet, you know, they don't, these are farm animals.
They won't be able to do that under this article, because they define what a pet is, and cows are distinctly defined as livestock in the Board of Health regulations.
The definitions are open-ended. So to me, a, a goat or sheep is not a pet. That's, that's a livestock.
And that's why we have this before Town Meeting, to discuss that.
Well, I know. And then, and this is in, in response to a specific situation. We know, we all know that. And in return, it's this broad-based solution that is, I think, over, overbearing, and I think down the road, it will have, again, a detrimental impact on the quality of life for people. And we talked, someone mentioned about responsible owners of, of these animals. I, I can tell you that almost every morning at the crack of dawn, there's dogs barking in my neighborhood. There are times where dogs bark all day long. So that, to me, that's not a responsible owner. So the fear here is that the Board of Health may not be able to police this adequately. So...
Mr. Chairman?
I'll speak more to it at FinCon, but I think that this really hasn't been fleshed out enough.
Thank you.
Just for Matt's benefit, I think, I want to be clear, staff's not recommending, there's no recommendation here per se from staff that it be expanded to all, with, with zoning, if it starts off broad, it can be narrowed. I think in two, I wasn't here in 2014, but my understanding is Town Meeting deliberated and did exactly what you're describing, which is decide that R1 is inappropriate. I think, my understanding from the discussions I've had, is that even if, even if the zoning doesn't change and it remains only in R2, the regulations are going to be, help to clarify regardless of what the zoning says. So by starting broad, it can be narrowed to just R2 and R3, or remaining just in R2. So R1 may not see through. But I think the regulation piece is a good accompaniment regardless of what the zoning ultimately ends up reading.
Thank you. Mark, you have something?
Mr. Chairman, the one question that I have in regard to this article is, I thought the main purpose of this keeping animals zoning bylaw was to permit goats or sheep. And I don't see it anywhere on here. You seem to have thrown it into the Health Department, and it's not very clear to me that it's permissible in those three zones, or R1, R2, and R3. I can see that there's been a change on one and three, but in the definition, insert in proper alphabetical order, household pets. I thought this whole thing was about the goat. And I don't see it in here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
The, I'm going to take a stab at this and then Aaron's going to correct me. In the, in the Board of Health regulation, goats and sheep are both listed. In the zoning bylaw, the reason that the household pets are defined there is to make it clear to residents that they don't need to go to the Board of Health to have a cat. So the zoning tells you where these things are permitted. In the detail, if you look at page two of the definitions and the regulations, goats and sheep are spelled out as being domesticated animals that would be covered by the Board of Health regulation.
Okay. I haven't, I haven't gone into that detail because this section, Appendix F, is marked Article Six, so I ignored it. But I do believe that this has been an issue for three years now, and we seem to get close, but we don't clearly state that that's permissible. And, and I, I think the, the issue should be resolved and clearly resolved. Can we put goats in, in household pets?
Mark, it's on page three.
So I think there's two things going on here that, that might be confusing. So there's the zoning, which is actually quite a short piece. And then the zoning through its definition of the keeping of animals on residential premises, which will be, in this context, anything that's not a household pet. So I, if this thing is not a household pet, then it's an animal, it's a keeping of an animal. Then I go to the table of uses and it says, oh, I'm in R1, and that's a, that's permitted. So provided I get my permit from the Board of Health. So then I go to the Board of Health and say, I would like this animal. And then that's where that is further defined as livestock or whatever. And so then you say, under, I think it's the definition of livestock, as Mr. Clark just pointed out, is on page three, animals including but not limited to cattle, goats, sheep, swine, equines, camelids, poultry, and other fowl.
Page three on Appendix F.
I apologize. Yep. So it, I think there's a pretty bright...
Even though it says Article Six, it's really Article Seven.
I'll read it later, but I, I just needed to express that because it's not clear to me.
I, I think there's a clear line. And one of the philosophical points here was that before, the, the current bylaw, in the definition section, is also peppered in, in the definition section, our performance standards, our special permit requirements. What we tried to do here in, in close consultation with Rich Maloney, the building inspector and our zoning enforcement officer, was the zoning should just simply say, what you can do, define that, and then where can you do it? And in this particular case, the actual regulation of animals is something state law has long given the Board of Health jurisdiction on. They're much better equipped than the zoning enforcement officer who's worried about code, you know, building life safety issues, than, well, what's the right amount of size that, you know, six chickens need on your lot? That's much more the wheelhouse for the Board of Health. And so we've worked with Mark Carleo and the Board of Health to develop these set of regulations to get, I think, a better permitting regimen around the topic. And again, to, to Mr. Duggan's point, there's a lot that needed to be fleshed out. And I think some of the concerns that Mr. Duggan raises would be captured by the construction of the way the regulations define the use, such that, like my property in R1, I could not have, I don't think I could even have a rooster. I, I don't mean, I don't, I don't think I could have a rabbit pen. I don't want a rooster. They're very annoying. But, um, you know, I, I have a 1,200 square foot footprint on a 3,000 square foot lot. I can't conform to this. So even though I'm in R1, I'm precluded right out of the gate because I can't fit it on my lot with conforming to setbacks. So that's not to say Mr. Duggan doesn't have other points that need to be addressed, but I think R1 will control itself just because I won't be able to comply with some of this basic setback requirements that you have to have in order to even go forward.
Well, the only reason I'm bringing this up is because I think we need a clear definition that the goat is permitted, and we need to get away from this goat. But the, the other question I have is, you have a definition in alphabetical order of household pets. I mean, you've got boa constrictors, you've got monkeys, you've got all kinds of pets. And how do you cover that?
Well, I think, and again, I'm not the zoning enforcement agent, but I will go out and play one on TV for, for the moment, including but not limited to, I think, if you can go to PetSmart and buy a spider, it's a household pet. I mean, I think there's plenty of evidence to say that suggests that that would be something that we would define as a household pet. You can buy certain species of snakes and all kinds of critters at PetSmart, and I think we, we as an enforcement body would be on thin ice if we were to make a determination that that is not a household pet. I think what we tried to list here are the ones we see most commonly, and the ones that we anticipate running into, and the ones that were raised in the enforcement action that kind of brought this back around.
Well, the only thing I'm, I'm bringing, why I'm bringing this up, because I, I believe Bill and I were around at the time when this bylaw was changed, the zoning amendment was changed, and I don't think we want to have that reappear again, you know, with technicalities. And that's, that's the reason why I'm asking the questions. So, thank you, but I don't know. I'm going to have to read this.
Please do.
Steve, do you get the correction on F? It's Article Seven?
Yeah.
It says six, E, Appendix F.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you make that motion? Do I make the motion for, in favor of?
Can we finish seven?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to tell you.
That's okay. Yep, it's a long night, but then we didn't start at seven. All right. Ford, what's the, your...
Mr. Chairman, I move we forward this with a favorable recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you. Now, Maureen, if you'd like to make a motion to reconsider Article Six, please make that motion.
I'd like to, I don't know how to really say it, but make a motion...
To reconsider the vote?
To reconsider the vote for Article Six.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So the motion was to pass it forwards to FinCon with an unfavorable...
Recommendation?
No, recommendation.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, can we vote on the motion and then?
I'm sorry. Yes. The motion to reconsider, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Goddner. So the vote was to send it forward with an unfavorable, which we don't, means we don't agree with it.
So I...
If you agree with it, then you would vote no for that motion.
Okay. So I, can I make a motion that I vote no, or just vote no?
No, we'll, we'll have to redo the motion.
Okay.
So I, I can make a motion, the same motion I made before. I want Maureen to understand that no matter how we vote, favorable, unfavorable, or no action, this has to go forward by law. We cannot stop it, we're not trying to stop it, we have no attempt to stop it. It just goes to FinCon with our recommendation. They will hear it and they can't stop it. It still goes forward to the town meeting. They will make their own recommendation of support or non-support. So what my motion is, is to forward this to FinCon, so it continues on its path, but with the board's unfavorable recommendation as to the content, not to whether it goes forward, but to the content of the, of the language.
Okay. Could I, I want to change my position to favor.
So I'll make, I'll first, I'll make the motion...
Thank you.
That we forward this to FinCon with an unfavorable recommendation.
And who made the second before?
May I second it?
Thank you. Okay. So the vote to send it forwards unfavorably is the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed.
It's four to one. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Thank you for that, too.
Before we move off of that, just as a point of clarification, I'm glad Mark's still here. A question was raised earlier about amending this at the floor of Town Meeting. I'm fairly certain that Town Meeting cannot amend the language of a citizen's petition. I think the last time this came... I think the last time this came up, it predated me, but I believe John Zavalia had brought a petition to the floor. It could not be changed because the signers signed that specific language. That same catch-all at the end of this article is, is attached to every single article in here. I do not believe it should have been there, but I will clarify that tomorrow morning with the moderator or town council, just to clear that up before we get to FinCom.
They have been changed.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could ask, could you, the town manager, yes, please affirm that only the language that was on the petition is what's in the, in the article, and no other language or, or, or extension of that. And further, that, that, that it is not amendable because whatever number of people signed it, signed that language. To change it, changes the fact that, I, I might have signed it, if you said thin blue line, but if someone amends it to say thin red line, I may not have been in support of that, and it would be wrong to go forward in that manner. I'm not the lawyer, I'm asking that that happens.
I'm gonna clarify that with, with the moderator and council, and it'll be, it'll be, I'll notify this board, and by the time we go to the finance committee, that'll be resolved.
Okay. Very good.
And I'm glad you're still here. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome. The town manager will report to the board on various short items of interest.
I'll try to keep this brief. I, I can, I know how to take a message.
Thank you, Ryan and Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Um, just a couple of quick items. You received a letter in your packets about a very generous gift that Rotary made to the Friends of Endicott. We had a ribbon cutting at Endicott Park this week for a new pavilion, which I'm sure the chair will speak to. But we have a, a gift of $70,000 that has been committed by Rotary to the Friends of Endicott to continue working on the renovation of the children's barn. That gift will be made to the Friends in two installments of $35,000 this year and next year. With that in hand, the, the project itself will be about halfway complete. They've done some upgrades to the front facade, they've, they've, all of the fencing has been repaired, they're, they're working on doors and windows. This will complete all of the interior work, and it'll leave the roof, some siding on the sides of the building, some foundation work, and eventually sewer work that will quite likely be coming forward as part of a caper request at some point. But this is a very exciting project. The McKenzie Group and the Friends of Endicott have put a lot of effort into this project, and I, it's an incredibly generous gift that the Rotary has given directly to the Friends. So there's no requirement for the board to accept this gift because it's going from one nonprofit to another, but I, I wanted to bring the, to the board's attention. And even though it's not to the town, we will likely send a letter to Rotary recognizing this, this very generous gift that they've given to us, in support of us. You also received in your packets copies of three letters that went out in the last couple of weeks. They went to the groups that are using various town-owned buildings. This is a, it's more than a housekeeping item, but it's, it's an item that the town council has put on our radar for the last couple of years. We have the Danvers Art Association, the Williams School, we have the community council at 12 Sylvan Street next to Judge Mills, and a, this is my favorite one. We have a, it's a motorcycle gang, but it's retired police officers that go by the, a people named the Blue Angels, and they use-
Blue Knights.
The Blue Knights, thank you. Blue Angels Fly, Blue Knights Ride. For, for more years than anybody can remember, they've been using the Putnam Schoolhouse on Locust Street one Sunday every month to, to get together and have coffee. But, the groups that have been using these spaces have been using them for enough years that Chapter 30B, which is the state purchasing law, has, has changed a number of times. And we are required to go through a process to, to, to either reaffirm the use, which I think is quite likely, the town has the authority to, to, to determine that the current use is the appropriate use. But the letters went out in the last couple of weeks just to let those groups know that within the next year or so, we're gonna have to go through a, a process. We can help them respond to the RFP request for proposals that go out. And then related to that, I know there was some confusion over the weekend because the, the credit union, the Danvers Credit Union, which for many years has, has lived inside of Town Hall, is gonna be relocated to the front room of 12 Sylvan Street. Our food pantry operates at the back of 12 Sylvan Street, which is the former senior center. And I know that there was a, a friend of a volunteer had gone to Facebook and said that this is having an adverse impact on the, on the food pantry, and we're gonna be kicking in the mouth, and that is simply not true. We actually have, and I, I reported this to this board a couple of meetings ago, but with the town's CARES Act money, the, the state recently authorized certain capital upgrades to be done using that, those funds to create additional space. We've, we've run this by DLS, they're very supportive of what we're talking about. And so some of the, some of the work that will be happening on that building this fall is going to include upgrading the ADA ramp, which is, which is currently in, in a state of disrepair. We'll be making some electrical upgrades to the building. We'll be able to improve access and door locking and segregating spaces better. We've been working with the council. Maria Howlett is the Assistant Senior Social Services Director, she also runs the food pantry. She's been walking the building with DPW. They're, as we speak, or this week, they're flagging stuff that's been stored for many, many years that they want to throw away, so Public Works will come in and help them get that stuff out of there. So I, I wanna clarify that because I know there was some confusion this weekend. There's a lot more space in that building than you would think, and we, we're hoping to find some complementary uses. And we think that the credit union and the food pantry can do that because of the hours that they operate. So, just wanted to make that point of clarification.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you to the town manager, just for context, and people who don't know, the current Danvers Credit Union for Danvers employees takes up one desk and some storage space in the clerk's office, right?
I wouldn't describe it as storage space. It's, it's, but they use, they use-
But it's not, it's not a huge department, and it's not a huge leg.
Correct.
Okay. Because I too saw things on Facebook that obviously gets interpreted, misinterpreted, twisted, whatever it is. This is using the front portion of that building, which is currently not used by the food pantry. Is that accurate?
The, the food, the, the council has, I think, it utilizes more of the building than it needs because there's never been another use for that. So the, the senior center, it's a fairly large building. The, the primary, there are some office spaces at the back half of the building, and then the pantry area itself, which is essentially like a, a small market where the, where the volunteers work and where the food is distributed from. Lately, it's been curbside because of COVID, but the, the back portion of that building, there's also an elevator that goes to the second floor where there's additional office space, a lot of it's used as storage. So, part of what the volunteers are going through right now is identifying, flagging, and tagging all of the things they have in the building. Public Works is helping them get rid of stuff they don't need and then make better use of the space. So that, to your point, the front room, where there, there's currently like a vestibule or a sunroom, the room behind that vestibule will essentially function as the credit union at the front end. We, we were talking today with Public Works and the senior center about, you know, maximizing the use of the parking spaces there to make sure that it's complimentary. So, I wanna put everybody's minds at ease. And, and just as context, I, my understanding is that the, the community council actually operated out of these buildings prior to the renovation of the school, and they moved to 12 Sylvan Street many years ago in what was a temporary move, but the space really suits them at the back in the, in the former senior space. So, but I just, again, I wanted to mention that tonight, and yes, it's, it is a fairly small footprint in terms of what the credit union-
With no detriment to the current services or offerings?
There should be no, there should, there certainly will be some disruption this fall when we're making improvements to the building.
Right.
But ultimately, we think that these are complementary uses, and I think staying engaged with the council is a big part of that. And we do that through Maureen, who is doing a great job running the food pantry on their behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a one sentence, just real briefly, we did reopen Town Hall yesterday to the public, and that, that went well, I believe. I believe someone in Kathy's office was keeping an unofficial count, and we had maybe between 20 and 25 people stop in to do business. So we had been open since July on an appointment-only basis, which had been working very well, but we, based on our current numbers and where the state is in their reopening plan, we felt comfortable. We've, we've been identifying this particular Monday for, for the town building, Town Hall at least. And obviously, we'll, we'll continue to monitor our numbers. Our numbers are very good right now in terms of positive cases, and Mark and Judith Ryan continue to keep an eye on that on a daily and weekly basis. So, so that went well. And then the last thing I would mention, I did provide you guys a copy of a performance evaluation for FY '21, which is the year that we're now in, as well as some goals. You can see the goals that we adopted for the year that, that we just finished, and a, and a list of goals that I put together just for discussion purposes. These are sort of the, some, some big issues right now that, that we're focused on, some are continuation from existing goals. I don't necessarily, I'm not providing that for discussion necessarily for tonight, but simply to let you see them. And certainly, if you have others that you wanna talk about, the goal would be, at our next meeting on the 20th, we'll be doing my performance evaluation. So those, those for the year that finished June 30th of this year, those were turned into the office, they've been aggregated, they'll be distributed to the board in advance of the 20th. But at, on the 20th, my, my hope is that we can agree on the five sort of major objectives that we wanna focus on from now through the end of the year that we, that we're in. So, I'd be happy to take any questions now about these. And I did have a chance, I had a nice conversation with our newest board member, who was thrust into this process in the middle of it. But this is typically, it, it's an atypical year because of the pandemic, but normally we wrap up the year that we finish, we set goals and objectives early in the fall, and then that's what we end up reviewing at the end of the year, and the process just continues. So we're finishing one year and starting the next, just like the budget. But we had a good conversation about that, and so.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to take questions about this, and I, but that's all that I have.
I think we can all wait and discuss your goals at the next meeting in a little more in depth. It gives the board an opportunity to think of any they wanna add to it, and if they think of something, you can email the manager what you'd like to add to that list for discussion, rather than debate it tonight. Thank you. Board will consider the consent calendar item?
So moved as presented?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So, I had hoped to do something a little different tonight with gender item 11. Rich reads correspondence, select board new business, previous new business updates, closing comments. I'd kinda like to segregate correspondence and business updates from closing comments. So what we'll do is go through and do correspondence, updates, and then come back, circle back, and do closing comments before we adjourn for the night. And I'll start with the correspondence, and I'll end with my closing comments, and then I'll call on the different board members. So, just an update, Thursday at Endicott Park, there was a ribbon cutting for the new pavilion that Rotary donated $100,000 to the town to build. It's magnificent. We'll hold up to 12 picnic tables when we can start putting people close together. Very well-built. They were telling me that the support beams go down five feet into the ground. Usually when you build a deck, you might go three feet, so it was really very well-built, and it was a, a nice presentation from Rotary. I had a phone call from a resident of the condos up at Kirkbride complaining about the music and noise at Breakway, stating that it goes beyond 10 o'clock, which it's not supposed to. The owner was spoken to and reminded the music stops at 10 o'clock. If anybody hears music after that, please call the police, as it's a noise violation. We had numerous emails about Connor's farms and the size of the crowds. Contrary to Mr. Connor's belief, we're trying to close him down. No, we just want him to follow the safety guidance from the Board of Health to protect his, his guests, and that was expressed to him. I did get the email from Mr. Gagnon regarding his concerns about the Preservation Commission reorganization. He brought it up earlier, thank you, Mr. Gagnon. And he's gonna meet with Aaron Henry with his thoughts, and I'm sure we'll get an update on that. I did get an email from Mr. Lucy on the 30th concerning his open meeting violation complaint, but one paragraph says, "As part of my desired outcome, I asked for documentation that all members of the select board have received training on the proper use of emails with regard to deliberations by the board within three months of the violation. You said that three have already received training, the other two are scheduled. Please provide some short, sort of documentation of who has been trained and when that training occurred, and who still needs to be trained and when that training is scheduled." So, as I mentioned at our meeting on the 29th, I took the training in July, it was July 15th, provided by the MMA, and with the, it was given by the managing law partner of KP Law. I'm not providing any documentation unless the board, unless the AG's office recommends it. I'm sure Mr. Lucy will take my word that I took the training. The other board members, if you wanna respond under your turn, that's up to you, but this is the last night we can really respond to his complaint. So that's why I-
Mr. Chairman, a question on that.
Yep.
The AG has not yet weighed in on the-
Correct.
On this issue. And so I'm not sure, I would ask through you to the town manager or even a town council. While Mr. Lucy requests certain things, if the AG determines there was no violation, then there is no necessity for us to disclose that information or give him those answers.
I just stated, if the AG office says we should-
Right.
-provide documentation, I'll do so. In the meantime, I've stated that I've taken it.
No, I understand you have.
Yep.
I understand you've offered that information, but I'm asking the technical question, do we answer to his, to any person's requests where they demand action or, or, or want action?
Well, if it's a request for a public meeting, if it's a request for public records, we have to respond.
So that's a request for public record?
Yep. But it's not really, he's asking for documentation, but it's not public record at the moment.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the, the specific answer to Carter's question is that the response that the board voted on is satisfactory. If the AG seeks additional information, they'll, they'll ask for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me see what else did I have? But that was all my correspondence for the week, and I have no updates on old business. David, any correspondence that you care to?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Maureen.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I received correspondence sent only to me from several persons looking to sit down and have coffee and look for a desired discussion to hopefully reach some sort of a resolution or bounce ideas. I am concerned, however, that given the, and I've asked town, the town manager if this is not potentially a violation of, of chain communications. I've sent an email into the Attorney General's office. I am exercising an abundance of caution, given that one of the organizers of the group from which other participants have reached to me is filing FOAs and open meeting law violations. I don't wanna inadvertently get caught violating open meeting law. As we all know, if I contact Selectman Clark and speak on subject X, and then I call Selectman Mills and speak on subject X, I have created a chain discussion. Even if Selectman Clark and Selectman Mills don't know that I talked to the other one, that would be a violation of open meeting law. I've created a chain violation. I wanna make sure that if we meet with a third party, they can't say, oh, Gardner said this, and Dan said that, and Bill said this. Oh, Bill, by the way, Gardner and Dan have already said, you know, purple's an acceptable color for the new fire irons. That may pose an issue, and I think there's enough ambiguity there that I need clarification before I accept invitations from these people if I choose to do so. So, I, I, I don't rely on the individual's interpretation of law, I'm going right to the AG and asking that, that point.
Good.
So, just so, you know, I have received, you know, I've received individual correspondence. It wasn't addressed to all of us, so I wouldn't expect you all to know that I got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any correspondence, Maureen?
Um, yes. I also received correspondence myself from Mike Hagan, Mark Zubrick, and Keith Lucy, and also- Lucy, and also Dan, too. And I, you know, I feel the same thing. I don't want to create any, anything with open meeting law or anything like that, but I would like to talk to people and have a cup of coffee, you know, being a Maureen Bernard as a resident of Danvers, being around the town, and just, I'm open to discussion if that's fine, Dan. I mean, it's...
Well, Gardner's reached out to the AG's office because he has enough concern, so...
So I would like to meet with people. I just want to make sure that we're not violating...
I'll be happy to share the question I asked of the AG and the response I get back so that people are clear on how I phrased it, so that they can have a comfort level or not based on what I asked.
But also, just meeting with people could just be meeting about, geez, what, you know, what's your products at sale in five?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I guess I should have articulated that it was obvious this was an organized campaign to reach out to us. They all happened within hours, you know, it was several hours timeframe, Sunday night. And I'm not saying anything bad about that organization, but it was, it was obviously a concerted effort by a group of people. I received it from Mark, I received it from Dana Hagan, I received it from a woman named Higgins, I believe, if I can remember her name as well. So I just, given that it was the organization that reached out. If someone just called me and said, hey, God, I want to have a talk about XYZ, that's not a big problem. This just bordered on, the way it came out gave me pause, and I want to be extra cautious given that other members of that group are very pointed about open meeting violations.
Mr. Chairman, can't we be open when we meet with them anyways for coffee?
If you're meeting in a public place for coffee...
In a public place, you know, cafe and do or something, why can't, we could do that and definitely say if they start...
I wouldn't advise you to do it or not to do it.
Right.
It's up to you.
Because I would like to still meet with people. This is what we're here for.
Yes, it is.
To, for people to reach out to us and to talk with them, have coffee. But if it becomes something of a heated subject, then we just say, okay, you know, thank you very much for the coffee.
Well, just be aware that, well, we've already passed on a warrant, but we still will be voting at town meeting on the two articles that will probably be subject of conversation with the individuals. So I'm going to wait for Gardner to get an answer from the AG's office.
And that can be shared with all of us?
Yeah.
That can be shared.
I'll share the response.
Definitely.
And actually, you have just raised a point, Mr. Chairman, that I hadn't considered. At this point, we have deliberated and made our decision about that warrant. When we go to town meeting, we are one of 149 members, and therefore, talking at this point would not constitute an unintended majority.
Of the town meeting body, correct.
Because we are part of 149. So I actually, your point gives me a little more comfort. I would like to wait for the AG's response, but I think at this point, now that we've deliberated and made our vote, I feel comfortable that my next vote at town meeting as a town meeting member is one of 149, and unless that group gets, you know, 70 people together, 70 or 80 people together, then that's different. So, thank you.
Do what you feel is best for you. I can't, I'm not going to advise you.
No, I'd like to still, this is what we're here to talk. I'd like to meet with these people.
And that's...
And anybody, not just everybody.
And that is what Mike Powers was trying to say, that we need to sit down as a group and talk. And starting that way is, I think, is...
Well, remember how Steve was putting together those committees, you know, the subcommittees, with one from FinCon, one from, you know, conservation, we're trying to do that. The key is communication, right?
Right.
One person from the Select Board, like myself, you know...
But when you meet with them, you're meeting as Maureen Bernard.
Maureen Bernard as a resident of Danvers, correct. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. So correspondence were done down here? You were all set, Maureen? You just brought up your correspondence?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Bill?
I just want to alert people if they are trying to correspond with me and they go email. I do not email. I've been twice reported to the State Ethics Commission by Keith Lucy, and both times it's been rejected, but I'm not going to respond to emails because I don't want to have any perception of bias, and I don't want to have all my emails reviewed by the state or by Mr. Lucy. I'm just a little gun-shy. But I do like to talk to people, and Mark, you talked to me. Okay, you might have given me an email, but I didn't read it.
I sent an email, you ignored it, but I...
That's correct. That's correct, and I have no problem with that whatsoever. The farm has always been a place of people talking about things going on in town back since 1930, when my father was first elected town meeting member. So I have no problem with that. But just, if you email me, don't expect an answer, okay? Thank you.
Well, is that my correspondence, Bill?
I have, all my correspondence was relatively about the flag.
Very good. So closing comments, Bill? Any closing comments for the night?
Let's just get the town together again, okay?
Very good. Maureen, closing comments?
We all live in this town. We talk about unity. We have, everybody's going to have their own opinions and their own interpretations. I want us all to work together. I like the communication. I want to be able to go to the coffee shop and just say hi to people if any issues of this magnitude, like we talked about before, if we could all be well-informed ahead of time so it doesn't come to this. And I'm very happy to be part of this Board and learning the process, and sorry about changing things around at times.
No problem, Maureen.
But, you know, I'm getting it. I love all the material ahead of time, and thank you very much, you know, and congratulations to Kathy. And thank you, you know, Danvers. Thank you for watching us and having patience with us. But we'll all get there.
Thank you. Gardner, closing comments?
Closing comments, new business kind of stuff. A question that I might have asked under the Town Manager's update, but I'll ask now is, there is a narrative going around, and I just want to understand whether it's... I believe, I've actually asked the Town Manager, I want it stated on the record. The Danvers Health Department is very strident about masks and anti-masking. They make sure, they follow up on complaints, they make sure that they try to keep everybody safe. And I want to, I want to reiterate and just ask the Town Manager to confirm, while there may have been some verbal warnings and maybe even some written warnings, there has been to date no monetary fines of any business in town. Is that, did I get that right, Mr. Town Manager?
That is my understanding. I know we have, and I don't have the list with me. We've issued, Mark and his staff have issued a number of verbal warnings, several written warnings. We're close to monetary fines with a number of institutions, but we have not to date issued monetary fines to anybody for violation of the mask.
Because one of the things I've discovered over the years is Danvers is really reluctant to take the hard tack with businesses and with citizens. When I was on the municipal light board, there was a lot of discussion about people who fell in arrears and giving them all the latitude they could. Similar, I know other similar departments and divisions do the same. I think that is the tack currently being taken by the town. I'll respect it when they are forced into that corner, but at this point, no one actually has gotten a monetary fine for mask violation. My only other last comment is this, aside from, with all the Board, we all support the police, and we all want unity in this whole thing to stop the divisiveness. To that, in my discussion tonight, I made statements about a personal situation that is currently under investigation. I want to make sure I am explicitly clear that the business I referenced, I have no malice towards the business. A person posted things on Facebook that were lies that then got generated. That business, I love it. I've loved it for 40 years. I don't have a comfort level going in there now because of the situation, but I would not want any malice or harm to come to that business. I really, really like it, and it's a staple of Danvers. So I hope that's clear that I was not at all disparaging the business itself. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
David, closing comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this thing on?
Yes.
I'm concerned about minorities. As I said in my statement tonight, I am, in two minorities, old and gay. And in Danvers, for example, using recognized demographic statistics acceptable throughout the country, we have a minimum of 1,350 lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgendered people living in the town of Danvers. Can you name 10? No, you can't, because most of us are still hidden. There are only four rainbow flags on any buildings in this town, and mine on my house was almost taken down the night of the Trump rally until a couple of police officers told the thugs to get away. When the head of the police union spoke publicly at the Trump rally, he spoke of the rule of the majority and said the minority must not be heard. Essentially, that's what he said. And older people and minority people in Danvers hear that. And I will tell you now that many minority people in Danvers are now frightened of the Danvers police, and it's a damn shame because 2/3 of those police officers are absolute jewels. I don't know how that's going to get fixed, but it's going to be a long time healing, and that's a damn shame. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, my closing comments would be to remember the veterans, and is there any further business to come before the Board?
All set.
So since there's no, does somebody mumble?
Motion to adjourn?
Well, I can continue. Since there is no further business, the meeting is adjourned, and that's per Robert's Rules of Order, Section 21. So I'm adjourning the meeting because there's no further business.
Get a new book home, huh?
Shut it up, the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you, everybody.